Work session to order. And normal, I'll just do it. I think I need to get this, sorry one second. All right. For normal, I'll start with a review of tonight's agenda. If you have questions that you'll have for staff that they can have some time to research. Please ask those clarifying questions as I go through this. And we'll begin the public comment. Nobody has submitted either online or in person yet, but we do expect that we may have some Sandy Library Advisory Board members. Who is to testify in person, so we'll keep an eye out for that. A response to previous comments, public comments. I don't believe we had any in our last meeting. We'll get in our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our April fifteenth meeting. By the final amendment to the transit operations contract. The I G A agreement amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty four with Mount Hood Express. Another I E G A renewal, this is time for the fiscal years twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six for the Mount Hood Express. A scaled revenue road closure for the Mount Hood Farmers Market. A noise exception and road closure for chainsaw carving event. Then we'll get into new business. And our new business, we have a project update for the Sandy Operations Center for their expansion design. As well as the branding package approval for the new action sports components of Cedar Park. After that, we'll have our report from our city manager and round off the evening with our committee and council reports. A reminder that we do have an executive session at the conclusion of our city council meeting tonight. With that, let's go ahead and get into this work session. It's a.
Can I ask one question? Yeah, on the um uh wood carving thing, who owns the parcel over there by Champion and Industrial? I'm just curious about that.
It's Mr. Picking.
Okay, thank you.
Um, perfect. So with that, our work sessions on the system development charge update discussion, I believe it's many of you will remember during the. Um, parks S D C's for the blue discussion earlier. Well, not earlier in the year, late last year, maybe. And we were going to have a holistic conversation on all these S D. That's just part of that. Um, with that, Tyler, would you like to kick us off?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mayor. Jeff's gonna get a presentation pulled up here. And I will kick us off this evening and then we'll toss it over to F C S for. Um, their transportation S D C methodology and fee amount conversation. And then it'll come back to city staff. We'll talk about total cost of the building permit because I know that's high on the list of um. Uh, discussion this evening. And then once we have that discussion, we will also um move into a larger discussion and direction. As far as adopting an S D C methodology, adopting a S D C fee, and then confirmation of parks S V C's implementation schedule. I'm glad I've just skipped, skip that one to the next one. Um, so request from the la- uh, March eighteenth council meeting. Um, additional analysis from F C S included names of the T S P. So you'll see that in their presentation. There's a name. Um, instead of just the project number that will help identify what we're talking about when we get into that. Uh, revised comparison tables with additional cities that have had S D C methodology updated in recent months or years. Um, and also cities that are more actively growing and similar in sort of status as Sandy is. And then analysis on the P M P to bring multifamily costs per unit closer to single family and counselor children. That was a question that you raised. Um, and we could talk more specifically about that, but we were able to dive into those numbers and then we have a recommendation on which approach we should take after looking at that analysis. And then um also construction fee estimates, including existing fees for single family homes with and without the parks fee and Lou amount. This is, well. I can read that on my screen, but I cannot read that up there. Apologies for the small print. But I got a question um a couple of weeks ago regarding just the whole process of S D. S D C methodology, how that relates to the master plan process. So I just want to take just a brief minute to talk about kind of where we started and how we get to where we are today. And obviously, um, you know, the initial sort of um starting point for this is recognizing that there's a need to update. A master plan, whether that's a council direction, whether that's an issue, whether that's infrastructure needs, whatever the the starting point is, there's a need to update a master plan. So we go through that process. Um, we get the council direction and goals set out from there. We do public outreach with advisory committees, surveys, open houses, and the whole process to identify current and future needs. And once we have, once we have that completed, uh, we move into the actual creation of that master plan document. It's going to outline all of our current assets. Projected growth and projected demand for service going into the future. We're going to get a project list out of that, low, medium, and high. Um, estimated cost for those projects and then an implementation timeline. And then once we have an adopted uh master plan, you move into the system development charge. Methodology phase. And so there's lots of policy decisions that come with that. For example, what projects shouldn't shouldn't be included in the S D C methodology. How you should allocate those charges out. Is it, you know, depending on the S D C type, is it a square footage allocation? Is it a meter size allocation? Is it a number of unit? Uh, or based on the unit allocation. Um, a firm, F C S in this case, will calculate the defensible charge. And then determine how much of each of those projects are S D C eligible, recognizing that not. Generally speaking, not every project is uh eligible for a hundred percent uh S D C allocation to those. And then once that methodology is um updated, we notice the development community. We have also work session, which we did on March eighteenth. We take public comment. Um, ultimately, council will adopt a methodology. Typically, at that point, you'll also adopt the uh corresponding S D C fee, either a full amount or a phased in approach or reduced amount based on what the methodology is. And then the fun part happens, we start to collect the S D Cs. There, we collect those uh when the permit is pulled. Um, state law and our code allows for S D Cs to be increased annually based on a construction cost index. And so we do that. To make sure we're keeping up with C P I and our buying power with those S D Cs stays intact. And then find additional funding sources to actually complete the projects because they're not usually a hundred percent S D C eligible. So wastewater, raise rates to pay for the debt. Um, associated with those projects, parks, grant funding, uh, transportation, you know, hopefully O dot or another partner comes at the table with some funding to help. Uh, accomplish these projects, but at the end of the day, we're finding additional funding sources and partners to make the projects actually come into fruition. Lot of information, really small text, but um kind of a good start to finish. Synopsis for you. And then why update transportation S D Cs? So the methodology builds upon the findings that were in the new T S P that we just adopted. The housing uh capacity analysis, the economic opportunities analysis, and all of our other long range planning documents. Um, the T S P reflects an aspirational list of projects, right? It's all the things we want to get done. Realistically, we're probably not going to get every single project in a T S P done. But there's a uh a listing of all those projects that are eligible to use S D Cs to um complete. And then we want to reanalyze the S D C methodology to determine the fee adequacy um. Uh, in relation to, you know, newly adopted master plans and the project lists. Next. Thanks. And then before I kick it over to F C S, um, just a quick update on where we're at with all of our S D Cs. So transportation is what we're talking about mostly tonight. The last revision was in twenty sixteen, but the T S P was updated. Uh, last year, and so S D C conversation now in twenty twenty four. We did the parks S D C in twenty twenty two. Water S D C was in twenty seventeen, sewer in twenty nineteen. Both of those do need to be revised, especially with the. Current construction cost climate and the updated master plan for water that we did last year and the updated facilities. Um, plan amendment that we'll have by the end of the month for wastewater. And then fee and Lou was also done in twenty twenty two, uh, the same time that the parks uh was, and that was related to the Parks and Trails Master Plan.
So Tyler, since we're going to have the wastewater um plan in May, and we already have the water updated water uh facility master plan. Uh, do you think that you'll get to the, get to the, the S D Cs for water and wastewater uh this summer?
Uh, I don't want to give you an exact date, but I think that we can get them done in the very near future. Um, Zach and I had talked about this briefly a couple of weeks ago, and then I just sent. Um, a follow-up email today to uh, you know, get a contract and get. Um, the at least initial phases going on that to make sure that we have an updated methodology that fits our needs, given all the new data we have about our aging water and wastewater infrastructure. So.
Well, it's helpful because, you know, if you're looking at the whole.
Yeah.
All the wax, it's good to have.
Absolutely. And once we get those two updated, it'll be nice that we'll have. All of our S D Cs updated in a very, you know, pretty tight knit. Except stormwater, yes, uh, which we can talk about that now or later, but. Yes, we need to. Yeah. Um.
I'll be patient.
Thank you, counselor. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we use the engineer news record, uh, construction cost index for Seattle as the basis of our annual S D C increases. Um, you've seen those typically, I think, over the last couple of years in November with a January effective date. So we'll probably keep that same timeline in place for those construction. Cost indexes, uh, or increases rather, um, going forward. I just wanted to throw that out there that we, you do see S D C conversations annually, but that's just the C P I. Uh, or construction cost modification. It's not a methodology change. And with that, I will turn it over to our. Uh, colleagues, friends, coworkers on many projects with F C S.
Happy to be a, an employee of the city of. Good evening. Uh, thanks again for, for joining us uh for another discussion around your transportation system development charge. Um, we'll quickly. Just get you through this agenda. Mostly what we're doing tonight is just updating you based on what we discussed last time. There were a few outstanding questions. We want to give you some good answers to that and then hopefully move the process along a little bit. So we'll really quickly review. Transportation S D C background, then we'll get into analysis and talk procedures and next steps towards the end of the presentation. So looking at another flavor of the S D C cycle, Tyler did a really good job of, of detailing it. Probably a little bit more from a, a general standpoint from our perspective. With respect to S D Cs, this is sort of a, a good way for everyone to think about how these things happen. So. We start with the master plan up top, um, updating master plans is usually the, the place to start. That gives us a good project lists around which to build an S D C. Then we come in, we calculate an S D C methodology. We talk implementation steps with, with you all. You guys give us uh next steps. And then we start collecting that S D C revenue, building additional infrastructure alongside other revenues. So. Um, if there are any questions about the process, you want me to get into more detail, I'm happy to do that, but uh. I totally did a pretty good job of giving you a rundown there. And then just to refresh everyone's memory, the way that these calculate, uh, these, these fees are calculated. There's two components, one of which is the reimbursement fee, one of which is the improvement fee. Reimbursement fee is mostly kind of backward looking at existing infrastructure that has additional capacity. So think a. A roadway that's, that's capable of taking on more trips. Uh, there's additional capacity left in that road. The city can get paid back for that additional capacity by new development, taking out that capacity. Um, and then the improvement fee, which is mostly forward looking and, and. Predominantly, at least in this case, comes from your transportation system plan project list. Uh, we take a look at both of those amounts, the amounts of eligible. Uh, value in unused capacity of your existing infrastructure and the eligible percentage of. The costs of those T S P projects. We divide those into growth and system demand, which in this case is going to be a person trips. And that's how we come up with this development charge. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Zach really quickly to run you through our updated analysis uh after our discussion.
Thanks, Tim. All right. So this uh, this slide summarizes the uh improvement fee cost basis, which is based on your most recent T S P. Uh, we've broken this out into four prioritization scenarios, which you can see outlined below that. Um, scenario A looks at only the highest priority projects, which has sixteen point nine million in S T C eligible costs. Scenario B looks at the medium and high, that's thirty eight point two million, million ineligible cost. C is low, medium, and high fifty six point six, and D is all the projects. That's a hundred eighty point four million eligible costs. Now, these scenarios are really guideposts for where you could set the S D C charge. But we would not recommend, for example, removing projects to match these scenarios. Uh, we would recommend that uh you, you keep the entire project list intact, which is um. All the projects from high to low priority to, to very low priority. And then just use these scenarios as a way to, to, to think about how you want to set the charge. Um, that gives you the most flexibility on where you can spend your S D Cs.
Because with the study, we establish your maximum defensible cost, and then you have the power to set the fee. Lower than that, anywhere lower than that, uh, you're, you're, you're capable of, of setting it that way. So. This way, if you adopt the full project list, you've got maximum flexibility from a city standpoint. So let's say that the funds come available to do something that's in your. Your uh scenario D, that, that kind of aspirational project list. Some state funds come together, but you need to match. This is a great opportunity for you to use some S D Cs for that match. So it just gives you the opportunity to use your S D Cs. As, as much as you possibly can.
Question?
Yeah.
Um, so you have a bunch of this physically financially constrained projects listed and. Like it shows that the three sexy Bell three sixty second project is under there. That's thirteen million. My assumption. What I, my understanding was that that just basically cleaned out our S D Cs. Because we had to rob the operations, road operation stuff to help pay for that. So there's a bunch of other. Financially constrained projects listed with costs and stuff. So I'm, so are, are any of those financially constrained projects? Because it's showing S D C eligibility is zero percent. So I'm kind of confused about, we don't have any money for them now and. So how can they be already covered that we have money for them?
I'll, I'll say, and I'm looking at here at, you know, potentially. On that first page, we're talking about C one, C two, C five, and many of those are zero percent eligibility. That, that eligibility is set based on what will actually serve growth. So at times, these projects. Are replacement projects for something that exists already, or it's an update or an improvement to something that doesn't really add capacity to the system. Per se, as in, we can't count on more trips being possible as a result of this investment. That is the key. So if, if a project doesn't, doesn't add that capacity, then it's, then it's tend, we tend, we tend to look at it as not eligible for S D C inclusion.
I understand not eligible, but I don't understand. If we say financially constrained, aren't we saying, where I thought I heard earlier when I asked the question was that they're already funded. We already have funding set aside somewhere for it.
That's probably.
I can answer part of that. So a lot of those. Are pretty small. I mean, relatively speaking, in the transportation world, small like, you know, a hundred and twenty five thousand. Twenty five thousand, even three hundred fifty one thousand. A lot of these that have zero percent, but in the financially constrained list. Are related to the sacred school grant that we would go for. And that would not have any S D C eligibility, but it would be like sixty percent paid for by O dot, and then the local match would have to be defined. That's what those are, the majority of those.
Like about these other, like, you know, D, D, you know, of course Bell and three sixty second, but the other D projects there showing financially. You know, that are pretty big. So those. Are those included in the, you know, because it says like a hundred percent for the Village Boulevard extension. Um, but it says financially constrained. So I, I'm just wondering if those projects are in our calculations for collecting S D Cs.
Those that have the zero percent aren't part of the S D C cost basis. Because they're not adding, I'm, I'm assuming because they're not adding capacity to the system.
But if they show a percentage in the S D C eligible, but they also show F C, are they included?
Yes, they would be. Financially constrained, even though you've got theoretically, the funding has been identified for that. This is a part of that funding source. So, so the city is continuing to count on S D C revenues going forward, so they need to be included. Um, the only way that we take a project off of a project list is if it's been completed.
If what?
If it's been completed.
Oh.
So if it's been identified in the T S P and we deem that it's eligible, the only way that it's coming off or that it's not going to be a part of the, the cost basis is. If it's, if the city's already built it.
Okay, is the Bell three sixty second reimbursement part of this?
That's, that's not.
Not part of this.
Listed separately in the transportation system plan. So Bell and three sixty second were two different projects in the T S P.
Right.
But the reimbursement component was never contemplated in the T S P. And then you got to remember, the, the reimbursement, I think is going to pay back for like gas tax and other things. I don't think it's reimbursing any S D C associated costs. From my understanding.
You're talking about the advanced, the A F R D, or you're talking about the reimbursement. Right, right.
So you're, so we talked about the reimbursement S D Cs because it's under capacity right now, and so there's additional capacity. And trying to, you know, claw back a little bit more of the thirteen million dollars besides the two million dollars we had.
Yep. So that's included in the reimbursement fee, which is in a couple of slides from now.
So it is included?
Oh, so you're not talking about the A R party?
No.
No, uh, okay.
Talking about the S D C, but under the reimbursement category.
Correct.
Right.
Yes, so uh, I believe we showed a table. Um, maybe that was internally when we were talking. I've seen a table.
Probably.
For how the reimbursement fee was calculated.
All right, well, I didn't need to take you off.
That's fine.
It includes capital expenditures over the last fifteen years.
We've got a pretty extensive list.
Okay, great.
Yep.
So anything that, that continues to, to add or, or contain capacity for the city, that's included.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, and uh, really quickly about the reimbursement to be to one advantage of the fact that we've calculated that is that those can be used on the zero percent eligible projects. It's only the improvement fees that are limited to capacity increasing expenditures. So. All right, so um, we can, we can click through these slides at whatever pace you would like to go. We've, we've provided um a full, the full tables of all the projects now with project names. Um, this first scenario, scenario A is just focusing on the financially constrained and high priority projects. Once again, that's fifty eight point five million in total project costs. And sixteen point nine million in eligible costs. And that, again, that's eligible for the improvement fee. Um, then we have uh the medium priority projects on this next table. And if we scroll down to the next slide, you can see that if we have the medium and probably high priority projects together, that's a total of a hundred thirty one point two million in project costs. And thirty eight point two million eligible costs. Uh, the low priority projects list is a little shorter, but there's some bigger dollar amounts on there. So that's a hundred ninety point six million in total costs. If you look at all the low, medium, and high projects, fifty six point six million in eligible costs. And then lastly, scenario D is all the projects, seven hundred sixteen million of projects with a hundred eighty point four million eligible. In the S D C. And um, we didn't, didn't include it on this slide deck, but we also calculated the reimbursement fee based on the recent up to fifteen years. Um, like expenditures that you have, that still have capacity. So that also got calculated. And then on this next slide, we see the full calculation in all its glory. Uh, at the top is the cost bases. Uh, which are sorted by scenario and just as a reminder, these scenarios are just guideposts for how you might set the S D C. They're not, you don't need to choose and pick one. It's just a way to, to think about how you might want to set the charge. Um, so the total cost basis ranges from twenty four point six million, if you're just doing the high priority projects. Up to a hundred eighty eight point uh, point one million if you're doing all the projects. We divide that by the projected growth in daily person trip ends, seventy five thousand. And that gives us the charges down in the blue highlighted section, which ranges from three hundred twenty nine dollars per trip up to twenty five hundred dollars per trip. Uh, for a single family residence, that'd be fifty two hundred up to uh thirty nine, almost forty thousand dollars. Um, one other thing that has slightly changed between this presentation and the last presentation is that the multifamily charges are now. Uh, much closer to the single family charges. Uh, we, we looked into uh how the city is currently charging multifamily units. And we adjusted our recommendations to, basically, the, the, the whole concern was about converting from. Um, vehicle trips to what we call person trips. We looked into how the city was currently doing it. Um, it's defensible, and we decided to switch to what the city currently does. And so that's why the multifamily charge is now much closer. I can go into more detail if you want, but it's very nerdy, esoteric subject. So. Uh, and then we also briefly looked at a, 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 a charge based on the P M P hour trips. I think it was partially as a way of bringing multifamily closer to single family. Um, we did calculate that here. You can see the range of charges in the blue section once again. We don't think it's the best fit for Sandy, so we would still recommend going with the average daily trips table you just saw. Um, and. Uh, yeah, so if there's any questions about that, that's great. Otherwise, I'll hand it back over to Tim to talk about.
Yes. And so the next slide gives you a better sense of what your peer cities are charging for T S D C. So. Keep in mind that all of these fees that we're listing here for other cities are their adopted fees. So you can see here with Sandy at scenario D, all the way at the very top, that's your maximum defensible rate. So. You would be way above any of your peer cities at the maximum defensible rate. But you can see that Wilsonville, Oregon City, and North Plains are all above, even your scenario C, which includes high, medium, and low priority projects. So. Um, you're, you're right in there with, with many cities that are, that are kind of in the same boat as you, moving on down to scenarios.
Good question about that.
Yep.
So, and, and Tyler, moving forward, I'd like to know when we see these kind of comparisons, because we've seen a lot. When this, when they're updated, because if these were updated in two thousand, whatever ours were, I think that's relevant as well.
Sure.
Yeah, almost on a, on a power city basis, right? Yes.
And we've noticed that that's a, a, a pretty common request lately. So I think that that's something that we'll be implementing as well because it. It really does matter, and I think that these things move so quickly and they're so frequently updated that, like, for instance, the. Happy Valley charge that we'll see here between scenarios C and B, we, we are in the process of updating that. I think I told you guys that last time, but. Um, yeah, so even, even that will change.
It's probably not going to go down.
Oh, boy, if only we could bring that kind of news to the city of Happy Valley, but I don't, I doubt it. Um, I can't remember what the. What we're looking at right now, but.
It's definitely north of scenario C.
Yeah, okay, so there you go, little preview. But anyway, you can see, so you got Sherwood, Happy Valley, and Forest Grove, all there between scenarios C and B. So with scenario B, you're looking at, you know, kind of right there in the middle of the pack. And then as we go on down, Malala, Woodburne, and McMinnville would all be ahead of scenarios, scenario A and your current charge. And then below that, we've got Gladstone, Canby, Estacada, Milwaukee, and Troutdale. So.
Now, some of those, like I know Gladstone basically has no other land to develop, so they're basically landlocked and don't really have a need for T S P. So that's another kind of apples and oranges comparison too that, and I don't know much about the other, the other ones as far as the T S P needs. One question I did have is, you know, we kind of got surprised by how much the Bell three sixty second cost. And so we have cost estimates, best guesses.
Sure.
At this point in a project, you know, which is, you know, pulling a number out of hat almost. I mean, you know, it's a little bit better than that, you know, it was a scientific guess. But my concern is like how, you know, given the. Difference between what, you know, we thought it cost and what it actually cost. Is that, do you think that's a concern, or did you guys kind of go pretty high on your estimates or?
Well, we're, we're just using what you've got for your transportation system plan, and we've inflated it to, to modern or to, to current dollars. So.
Okay.
We're, we're not engineers, so I'm not going to try to, to do that, but.
As accurate as our T S P.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I mean, we find that those are pretty accurate. So, I mean, certainly, there's always the odd project that goes, that goes crazy and, and you see the budget balloon, but. I think for the most part, this is, this is, this is pretty solid.
Right.
We can always update the project cost too. There's nothing wrong with changing the, the project cost on your lists.
Okay, so with respect to next steps and, and what we'd like from you this evening is a little bit of, of direction. So. Um, discussing specifically the S D C discount. So where do we want to see that S D C get to? Um, what, what level of discount ought we to, to consider in implementation? Um, and then our next steps for this project are to come back to you. For the public hearing for adoption of the methodology report and uh adopt the new rates and the fee schedule. So any input on your sense for what you want to see for the fee would be welcome.
But before that. But before that.
Oh, my gosh.
Back to mine.
Oh, geez.
So we can give you a little more information before you answer that question. All right, so Kelly is here to back me up on some of these slides if I need it, but. Jumping in, so current S D Cs and park fee and Lou charges. So every new home. Is going to see the transportation parks, water and sanitary sewer S D Cs, and those are listed in front of you for you to take a look at. Parks fee and Lou uh is only charged when land is not dedicated during the time of flat recording, I guess. Um, and so that is hit and miss of whether or not that actually makes it onto a permit. Um, everyone will see the other S D Cs, some developments will see the fee and Lou.
We have another slide about it too.
Yes, we do. That's right. Um, and we're going to take just a couple of seconds, seconds to talk about what all is on a building permit in general. You've seen. Um, two examples as exhibits in the, in the council package. So also on a new construction building permit, you're going to have the school excise tax, which is a dollar per square foot for residential construction and fifty cents per square foot for non-residential. We keep one percent of what we collect and then transfer ninety nine percent to the school district quarterly.
Can I ask a question about that? Are these rates set by the state? Is it something the school where it sets, or where, where does that rate come from?
So this, the state sets a maximum amount you can charge. And then each school district can't go beyond that, but. I believe right now in Clackamas County, there's a school, few school districts charging up to a dollar seventy five per square foot for residential. And more for, I don't know what it is for non-residential, but Oregon Trail is definitely one of the lower school districts for school excise tax, at least in Clackamas County.
Thank you.
I just looked at the table like a couple days ago.
That's good. Uh, trade permit fees, so the building division charges the. Uh, trade permit fees. So the building division charges the following. We're using a twenty three hundred square foot house in all of these examples. Um, so about forty five hundred bucks for plan review, just under seven hundred for um the uh. Plumbing permit and related components, two hundred and fifteen for mechanical, four hundred and twenty. Three for the state building division surcharge, which goes directly to the state, and then five hundred and forty six for electrical permits. So that's charged by Clackamas County. We don't do electrical here, so we take care of everything else in-house upstairs, but electrical needs to go through the county. And then additional planning and public works fees, we had about thirteen eighty five for a plan review coordination and inspections, including grading and erosion control, and then public works charges five hundred and ninety six dollars for the water meter and inspection fees. And those are um. Closely related, I can't say the exact charge, but closely related to the cost of a permit and play, uh, I'm sorry, a um meter and placing them here in the ground. So we're just really recovering our costs for. Um, for that fee.
Before we go to later slides, these last two slides, these costs are all based off actuals. Right? Didn't didn't we review these fees? And they're based off what it actually takes, the labor and the.
Closely related to what it actually, yes. So Ellie does a great job of annually reviewing all of his fees for the building and planning charges. Um, we've made.
These are not arbitrary.
They're not.
Based off what it really stands on this stuff.
And quite frankly, there there's probably room for some increases to capture the true cost again since our last.
Sure, all the overhead that can be attributed to.
Yep, so we we look at them annually. We've always for the last gosh, six years at least, I took on the finance director roles, have done an annual increase. And then uh adjusted as needed for other ones where the the true cost of staff time has increased more than that CPI increases, but.
Thank you.
What this doesn't consider is that when the planning fees are charged to the developer. The developer has to turn over to architects, to engineers, to designers on the long list of. Outside the city's costs to respond to the permits and such. And those become a pretty significant part of the cost of a house as well. So what we are getting here is the city side of the cost, not the total cost to the developer.
Absolutely.
And we don't know what those are.
Couldn't tell you.
It varies greatly.
Oh, oh, I understand.
Some people hire an architect or engineer and some people hire a a designer.
Do themselves.
That then gets the engineer to sign off on it for a small fee. So they do. And there's no way.
And some of them just have a, you know, eight different models you can pick from that they.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Yeah, so.
It doesn't always work that way, though, but you you do get quite a bit of outside costs. So. I'm not sure that we should be considering that, but it just seemed like uh we're talking about a fair amount of money on the city side. Not recognizing that there is cost on the other.
I mean, what I can say to that is from managing. That apartment. For me to pay for. Or for the city to pay for personnel costs and other associated costs like supplies, we can't consider that. That's that's just that's just a fee that that's part of development. And we can't consider that, because otherwise we can't pay for our own personnel costs.
Right, but so so the only point that I think that is relevant is that we're talking about. Looking at SDCs in a holistic manner, the whole long list of one of those eight, I think it's eight different charges that we're getting. And looking at that how that costs at a house to be built. And for the last conversation we had, it really wasn't the affordable kind of housing that we are directed to get, because. The six hundred thousand dollar house is probably not in your affordable category. And that's what these guys are. So we're really talking about just. Standard house that. A real person would pay for.
I frustrated with this conversation, I'll just say it, because. We're here to review the T S P charges and get direction on that. At the SDCs associated with the T S P. So to me, these charges that are just, they just are.
Let's get to the SDC.
Yes.
And then we have. I get it, but I wanted to make sure we don't forget the fact that there are. And I'm gonna keep it there.
Right. Um, so total permit fees for a single family home that is two thousand three hundred square feet, if you're including parks fee and loop, because the developer did not uh dedicate land, they're looking at just over fifty one thousand dollars all in. Um, if a developer donated land. Then the fees that you're going to pay for that same house are thirty four thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Next.
So that's all your inspection, that's everything.
That's everything. Yes, that's a.
Including SDCs? That's just, that's just a big long sum of money that, okay, never mind.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's SDCs, all the um, all the permit fees, all of our charges that we charge internally to process that plan review, all of it. These are exhibits C and D in the packet. Thank you, Chuck. And.
What you're saying.
I said, when I look at these, this tells me this city who has a wastewater problem, a water problem. And a sewer issue prioritizes parks over everything else.
Why?
Well, we.
They stopped the SDC.
Well, we haven't had a chance to see to redo the SDCs.
Yeah, I think those last two are still coming. So I don't know.
That's my, that's that's my argument. That's my concern.
Well, so this gets to the heart of my thing about. Plans, all right? You make a plan, you prioritize the list, you come up with the methodology, it's just simple. The decision to be made here is which projects do you think are actually critical to grow? And if they're not critical to grow, because we're not going to grow. Then they fall off and you can reduce your charge. If they are critical to growth and you choose not to fund them from your SDC, then you're just pushing it back on the citizens who are already here. And that's the reality.
And then we then we asked for all the SDCs to come to us at one time so that we can see the cumulative effect it would have on residents and business and the community as a whole. And right now we did parks, which was a one-off. And now we're looking at transportation SDC, and then you're going to ask us to come back and do water and sewer. Next thing you know, I'm going to have everything at at this high amount. It's going to make all my. You know, builders scared. And I I mean, I thought we were just going to talk about it all at once.
Yeah, that was the intent, because we thought we would have twenty twenty four.
So we could see how much money we need, so we can look at our projects.
We thought we would have the water and the wastewater and the.
That's right.
The completion of the wastewater amendment. Plan has been was delayed, and so that's what, but see, we we also said that we would look at them in twenty twenty four. So we but we thought we'd have it more. So my interest would be, we need to kind of figure out the T S P stuff now, but. My interest is kind of waiting till we have that stuff this summer and looking at everything at once, rather than trying to start messing with stuff, because. Honestly, we're in a moratorium right now. Um, we've already with the fee and lieu of most of the five hundred and seventy, not all, but a good portion of them already got the fee in lieu of at two hundred and forty one thousand dollars, not the, not the big number. And and the others got a half off uh four hundred thousand dollar charge instead of the big number. So I don't think anybody's even paid the big number yet. So. You know, like I said, I think we're, for me, today, I just want to make sure we get the T S P stuff rolling along at what it needs to be, whatever y'all think it is, and then wait until we have the whole picture.
Well, what what you mean, though, is is receive information on the T S P and have a conversation about it, but wait to give direction on. Not on what that SDC is going to be until we have all the numbers in front of us.
That's what I want.
And I don't know if that's what you're suggesting or not.
I'm not suggesting, I wouldn't.
Well, I I am one hundred percent absolutely suggesting that, because that is what we as a council body one hundred absolutely asked for. You know, seven to nine months ago, a year ago, and we've asked for repeatedly. So in the first time, we're sitting up here having this conversation.
You get mad.
Uh, very mad, I'm very frustrated, and I think our council as an entire board should be frustrated.
So. Are we going to get mad at Jenny because she took longer to get the.
Oh, I'm saying.
Done?
No, I'm saying that I'm.
The time it took.
Sure, but we don't have to make a decision on what the SDC is going to be today.
Contract with these guys to run through another twenty.
We, you guys keep. We can just keep raising SDCs item by item until it becomes unaffordable to live in this community.
Yeah.
But I think there's a group of us who's unwilling to do that. And who has asked for when we make our decisions to be able to do it in a holistic fashion that looks at all the SDCs right next to each other. And I plan on waiting. Personally, until I have that decision, until I'm able to vote for any new SDC.
So let's be clear, just for the campaign speeches.
It's not about the campaign. We've asked for this a year ago when it wasn't campaign season, Don. This has nothing to do with the campaign. I take great offense to that comment.
Apologies.
Thank you.
Retracted. But what we're saying, when we delay, then we delay funding those projects. If we choose to increase it a year from now. Then we have delayed. That year, and that's a lost opportunity. And and if we want to, I'm going to come back to this parks versus thing and the whole idea of this holistic thing. What we are doing is a holistic, yeah. The idea that we want to. Look at parks against wastewater and so forth, to me, i- is. It's it's very, it seems almost unobtainable from an optimization perspective, because there's so much optimization going on in each one of these individual areas. Once again. If you think, or any of us think, we're over. Funding a set of projects, whether it's in parks or anything else, that's to me is a conversation that we have. And then we said, but after. I'm not uncomfortable just arbitrarily cutting this or cutting that, because we are just shipping the cost on everybody else toward it and lives there. Very true. Can can I uh add two things? One, or is there more presentation?
There there's three more slides. I only really have one more point to make.
Okay, I I I'd like to make sure Tyler gets to his point. I also want to make one point, though. And that is I keep hearing that the that by raising these SDCs, we're putting the burden on our residents, and I I that is a false statement. We're putting the burden on few maybe future residents as they develop into the house, but it relieves the burden on current residents. I just want to go on the record of saying.
Exactly. All right, thank you. Yes. So.
Mostly.
The only other thing that I wanted to note.
Discussion first.
Let's finish the presentation.
Get past it.
Yeah. Uh, so the only other thing I wanted to make sure that we noted and and FCS touched on this. Um, methodology and rate, two different discussions. We can adopt the methodology, acknowledge that we have a list of projects that we ultimately need to do, that we have a T S P that was done. And we can talk about the rate tonight. We can talk about the rate in three months. We can talk about the rate in a year. Um, but the the lengthy process of evaluating how to get an updated methodology, getting our consultants to do that work and getting to this point. Um. Is not directly, well, it is directly related to the rate, but it doesn't force our hand in modifying the rate tonight. Um, I think there is some. Benefit to getting the methodology updated and getting it, you know, adopted and recognizing that we have. A lengthy list of projects, depending on which category, you know, you pick thirty eight to a hundred and. Ah, I knew the number, one hundred and eighty eight million. Um. You know, so a wide range of projects, but uh, you know, ultimately, we we have um. A. Large amount of work that's been done to get to the methodology standpoint that getting that adopted would be. Welcomed news to just be able to put the T S P and the related methodology behind us and then talk about the regular later date if we'd like to do that.
Can I bring one more thing up too?
Absolutely.
Based on a past resolution that the council adopted, you do need to make a decision on the parks SDC. Or give us direction, because there's a resolution that's been adopted. That says we have to revisit it, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Parks?
That's a great point.
Yes, that was the decision that we made a year ago when Kent over here in a work session.
You need to give us direction, though.
The so the way that that resolution was adopted was. Here is a ten year implementation plan. Let's revisit it after one year and make sure we're still good with that implementation plan. If no action is taken to halt the implementation plan. It will go forward as of July first. But it needed to be discussed at a council meeting. Note, review whatever word you want to use.
Not a meeting.
This is a work session.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's a meeting, doing, talking about it.
As you can see on the implementation schedule per the resolution that was adopted by council. That new rate will apply, as Tyler just said, on July first, two thousand twenty four. So that will be the rate I will start charging. Customers when they pick up their permits.
And there was an interim rate in twenty twenty four of actually ten thousand five hundred or something. Um. It went from eighty nine, and then we held it at eighty nine, and then was ten thousand five hundred, and then the twelve thousand. So that might be an option too.
No.
Um.
It's still at the.
I was still talking, so I'm sorry. Um, so my point, my concern about uh revisiting this is that, and Rochelle's in the room, yes? Thank you. Um. The money for. Deer Point, Champion Way and Ponder Lane. Requires us to be collecting these monies. So before we start cutting things. Or 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 making those decisions, I want to make sure we're all aware of what that means for our current residents who. Um, are expecting a park. That we, you know, based on a master plan that we all approved unanimously. So I don't want to. You know, I think if we're talking about. Changing these things up, we also need to kind of figure out what if what if the projects in those master plans have we just said we're not going to do it, because we're not going to collect the money? We can't, we can't just say we cut this, but still have the master plan up there, because that's that's.
Yeah.
We've done that in the past. To me, the assumption was and implied purpose was that we would have all the SDCs. To look at when we looked at this one year, look at the parks. And here we are with all we have with the transportation.
We all agree.
It is.
So.
For what?
What we're looking for.
We have.
I know, but let me finish. I mean, I know there's some. Interest in making sure our points get across, but my point is is that without knowing what those others are, I'm very uncomfortable. In fact, I would vote against anything. That would come up with a rate for the transportation until we come up with the other SDCs. I'm not seeing that. And because not only would it mean differences in how much it's charged, but also means in how much. I feel if we do this step by step by step about how much those latter on SDCs that we evaluate, I would be willing to vote larger numbers. So to me, I need them all at once. If you need to do it with methodology.
Yep.
We can do that.
Go to Don and then over to Lori.
Okay. So. I understand wanting to see it all. I even understand that we went through that parks thing and we were excited and maybe the emotion got us and we bought into the whole. Project list and a high SDC. I'm okay talking about that again. All right? But the idea that we need to look at it all in it is based on this idea of affordability and SDCs are not about affordability, they're about who pays. Is it new development or is it? The existing residents. And to me, that's what this is about. So if you, for those of you who say, I can't look at the transportation, the S, the the transportation SDCs today, because I don't have everything else. Today, we are charging four thousand eight hundred twenty six dollars in our SDC. We're at the bottom of the list. We have a set of projects in our master plan. Even at the lowest scenario, we think should be higher than that. But you're telling me as a council, we're unwilling to make a decision today. Knowing that we are charging, basically shifting the burden onto the existing residents for those projects that we will have to do, those high priority. And financially constrained projects, we will be doing. And so we're unwilling to talk about that? Until we see all the others? Oh, Lori.
Basically, what I'm telling you is that, one, we collectively agreed as a council last year when we looked at parks SDCs, that we would revisit the parks SDCs with the stipulation that we would see all of the other SDCs together. So that we can make the collective informed decision on what those SDCs need to be. I'm also recognizing that we just had a presentation on the fact that there is no affordable housing in this town. And 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 there's these SDCs, while yes, they do get visited upon developers and new. People coming in into this area, they're not mutually exclusive as to who wears the burden, but residents still wear the burden, one wear the other. My other, my other thing is that. We have water and wastewater that still needs to come to this council for SDCs. And if we just, if if we just continue to to look and and attach SDCs to new development, one on top of the next. We're going to have houses with, I think the full package equals eighty thousand dollars. On a new home? That's insane.
So are there robust? Um, Catholic.
Okay, um, first of all, we've already, um, the park SDCs, we have already uh taken about a third of the projects off the list. It is like those choices we have today with high, medium, low. The the top rate was like thirty three thousand. We said we're not going to do that. So we've already shaved off a third of the projects, okay? That's my first point is that we've already cut that. Um, then we've then we've kind of cut it further because we ramped it out for eleven years. And that's, you know, an appropriate decision. ramped it out for eleven years. And that's, you know, an appropriate decision. So I think we can all live with it. The thing that I think we all agree on is that we want to see some affordable housing in Sandy. We want to, but what that means to me is that that's somebody that somebody's going to come by, come forward and say, I want to do low income housing. I want to subsidize mortgages, you know, Habitat for Humanity, controlled rents, whatever it is, I, you know, there's a whole lot of ways to get that. When those people come to the city and say they want to do this, I'm more than willing to say, you know what? That's a great goal of the city. We are unanimous in that goal, and we can waive or reduce SDCs to accomplish that goal for you. But I'm not willing to say everybody else gets the free ride or, you know, gets, you know, gets that because the fact of the matter is, is that any reductions in the SDCs ends up getting, you know, pocketed by the developers. If we cut our SDCs in half, the house would still sell for six hundred thousand dollars if that's the market price for it. And where would the money go? It would go to the developer. And, and, and the cost of doing that, again, is, is then put the, the burden of that cost onto the existing residents. And I'm not willing to do that. We have been doing that for years and years and years. Our plans were outdated. They weren't getting SDCs increased every year. So we, so, so much of what we're sitting here with wastewater and water was because we didn't have updated plans. We didn't update SDCs periodically, and here we are.
So that's, if I, but if I, if I may, okay? The, the folks, I believe, I can't speak for everyone, but we're not speaking out against increasing our transportation SDCs. We're not speaking out against raising those water and wastewater SDCs or water SDCs. We need those. If we don't raise them on developers, a point has been made. It will go on to our residents in the form of utility rate payments, everything else, right? I think the argument is, is to collect an SDC, you do have to develop. There does have to be a marketplace to actually construct and to build. Now, I, I, Rich, I, I agree with a lot of what you say. I do believe that within the market, either the developer's going to keep and retain that money, make a profit, or that money's going to get collected. The market's going to dictate that. Either they get to keep it or we take it. I, I, I get that. But I still think there's a point within all of that 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 developer has to say this pencil's out for me to actually construct or not. And I want to see more construction in Sandy because I believe the additional construction does affect our housing supply. It does affect our housing prices. And when we talk about whether or not it affects non-residents versus residents, I don't live in my forever house, but I do believe I live in my forever community. And I don't want to live in the same house for the rest of my life. I would like to maybe buy another house in this community. More important to me than that, I want Lucy and Olivia to come back to this community and be able to afford houses in this community. And so that's why the SDCs and the increase in the ability for these construction guys to build more and keep prices down is important to all of us. But back onto this decision. Just no matter whether we feel that this SDC should go up or not, as a council, as people who work strongly together, agree, disagree, debate these issues, I believe strongly that we collectively, whether we agree with it tonight or not, we made a basis for a decision. We said, when we debated the parks SDC and that went up, the reason a lot of people agreed to that SDC and backed off a lot of that debate was because we were going to come back the next year and holistically look at all these together. And yeah, do I want to raise the transportation? We're finally, quite honestly, we're finally to the SDCs I want to raise. We raised one that I voted against and I wasn't for, but I believe that people are making decisions on the parks SDC that's now lopsided against the rest of these because we didn't have a chance to weigh it against these other SDCs. And that's all the rest of us is asking for, and quite honestly, we were expecting to have. And it says winter of twenty twenty-four. It feels like, uh, winter, but it's May.
And we're months away, probably. I, I don't know.
Right, and we're months away. But where, are we able to? Is staff going to be able to get us?
Are we a year away? Oh, well, to get this, the water.
You gotta have your facilities master plan updated and then go through the methodology increase. It's not going to be this summer.
Well, it's done.
Start the process.
It's finalized in May. The end of May is, we already have the water one, and the wastewater one is supposed to be done by May, right?
And what's the general timeline for a methodology update?
Especially with the new master plan. I don't know, don't quote us on any of this.
But ballpark, I mean.
And it's an amendment to the master plan, Jenny. I mean, I, I don't know how different it is from what the two thousand nineteen plan was, so it's not like it's totally out of date.
For actually calculating the SDC, you know, with review meetings, maybe two to three months. And then you have the ninety day notice period before you can actually establish them.
Maybe by the end of the year if we risk.
But the ma- the master plan also has to be adopted as part of the complaint. I mean, it's it's going to take longer than two to three months of just letting me know, like, it's not going to be that fast.
You haven't even looked at the stormwater. I hate to keep bringing that up, but.
Winter twenty twenty-four, right? Am I wrong here? We were going to revisit it. That slide said winter of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that's winter twenty twenty-three slash twenty point four, like before the clean December twenty-three and.
But we also had indications we would have the master plan done before then, but I, I'm not quite sure why we have to have everything all in the complex. You know, we can, they can start working on the SDCs for the wastewater plant. They can do it right now with the water, and they can start with the other thing, I would think. Go ahead, Jenny.
The, the water master plan, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the pricing. We're holding true on that. So we've already talked about getting that in the queue. The facility plan is more complicated because DEQ and EPA have to review everything. And, and what I will say is, from what I've seen of phase one A, a lot of things were left out, especially the treatment places weren't priced properly. So we're dealing with a lot of cost inflation. And so, yes, we're supposed to get it this month. But I need to review it and vet it before I bring it forward to you, and then it has to be approved as well. So there's just, there's just more complication with that one.
That doesn't feel very long, like a very long timeline that you just gave.
Sounds like summer.
Sounds like the summer.
To the plan?
Well.
Just made her uncomfortable.
No, you, no, you didn't make me uncomfortable. It's just there's a layer of oversight from the federal government now, and it's, it's difficult with the timeline. And we also have to incorporate the stress test results, and we're just, we haven't even gotten direction on how to wrap up that thousand page document. So, yes, I believe if I were doing it two to three months, yes. There's that other, and then that's when we can agree and give the information to FCS to start. So that they're, they're on different timelines. The stormwater, we've been building up the utility as, as planned, but we've.
And we talked about this a lot during the budget process, and I think kickoff was going to be towards the end of next fiscal year and definitely underway next by any M, if I remember correctly.
That is correct. If we're pushing up utility rates, though, we're, we're collecting less, so that'll be pushed off slightly. So to truly have everything at once, i- it's going to be pushed off, but I could definitely see getting the water ones here, and we can do that right away. And we can work on adjusting the wastewater one as quickly because those are the two large ones.
Well, yeah, I mean, in a lot of ways, water, we, water wastewater is getting adopted by this council. But like, 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 we have no choice. And so where I get for, and that, I think, starts to show some of the frustration at the order of this.
Right.
Is the ones that we would legitimately kind of have some discretion over is parks and transportation. And we are doing the two that we don't last, and it feels, and, and there's no bad actors in this. There's not. But, but it fe- it feels like if I just wanted the highest possible SDCs, this is how I would do it. This is how I would do it. You know, I would start with parks. I would go to transportation and then go to the two you can't touch.
I want to add just one thing. I know we're a long time, so two things. The, the first thing is, I, I want to make sure that we're, when, whenever this comes back as a group, right? I would like whatever holistic manner it's going to be, whether it's just SDCs or we start looking at the whole charges. I like the comparable cities along with the timeline that those were established with the exact same matrix there, being the first thing. And then the second thing is, because I want to see where other communities are. Because the other piece of it is, if I'm a developer, absolutely, I'm going to be lobbying my case that, that I'm, I am broke. I need this. I need this. But we also have to remember, for a long time, we've been under a moratorium where we're not allowing development. We have no idea where our SDCs are. And the other piece is, if we set them high, and honestly, it doesn't get the result, we can adjust. But it's a lot easier to come down than it is to go up. And I want us to keep that in mind, because our citizens in our community is lacking parks. There is no, and, and as we grow, there's less and less for our kids to do. And this is the money that we can use to land bank to buy that infrastructure. And I challenge you to go look at the other communities and see what their kids are doing and find those challenges and, and see what Sandy's at. We're behind the power curve.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the one way that we can do it without putting it all on our citizens' backs. So.
Well, and I think just for, for me, the vote would be the difference between voting for scenario B versus scenario C. I have no doubt that we need to increase our SDCs for transportation, and I'm there. But I can't, and I even want to go to C. I, I think we could go to C. But I can't go to C until I know what wastewater and sewer is, because then all of a sudden, I'm, I'm afraid that that house price, that I think the average Sandy house is probably four fifty to five fifteen, and you're paying fifty-one thousand right now. Now you're going to be paying seventy to eighty thousand. That's fifteen to twenty percent of the house average price. Don't tell me it's not going to affect the new people coming in and what it's going to hurt us. So I just want to have concept. This isn't about whether or not I want to, for me, uh, raise the rate. I, I want to find out where, where the sweet spot is. Whether it is B or C, because it's definitely not D for me. Uh, but is it B or C? And I, if the other rates are, are advantageable to us, then I can see myself advocating for C, which I think probably a lot of people on the council want to get. Uh, but I, I can't say yes today to that. I would be more, if you needed a, a vote from me, the methodology is fine for those scenarios.
Sure.
If you needed a rate today, I'm going to say A, and then we can go revisit it later. Because I'm not ready to say B or C until I see what the other rates are. That's just my opinion. I, I, I agree. I would be in favor of the methodology, but I would not want to vote for any kind of rate change or increase. I want to see the, before I start talking rates. I want to be able to balance it out. One, it's got to be fair for the others.
Do we have a, um, sense for, I mean, what I heard at the last time this came up was that the fee in lieu of was the sticking point? Is that, is there a concern about the park SDC?
I don't. For me, I don't know.
I can't answer the question.
For me, I don't know. I would love to keep the parks SDC exactly where it is. Um, I love it. Honestly, and then that would, that is my full intention and hope and dream, right? It's just, I can't give you an answer to that without going almost exactly verbatim to what Chris was just talking about.
So what's our direction? Any decision? Adopt the methodology? Don't change the rate?
I, I would like to see the rate stay the same until we get a chance to look at the others. Methodology, I, I can't build any holes in it. It just.
Well, we're, what they would like is direction for what they bring back.
And I would say the methodology is pretty close.
Is it possible to get us? I mean, obviously, the water can happen, but the wastewater stuff, you know, I know everybody's got to get their way in government and all that stuff, but is there, given the estimated costs that we've had, that I've seen in wastewater committee meetings, is it possible to kind of get a wag of what a possible, uh, SDC is for wastewater? And you won't be held to it?
I, I, I have to disagree with some of the things you've been told. My experience, my entire career, as well as a lot of the plans that have been brought before you, is when we actually check on prices that have been built recently, they're often significantly higher than what's in the plan. I mean, our way, our master plan alone, I was told eighteen million dollars for the Portland connection, and I put forty in there, and right now we're holding to that price. I would like the SDCs to be based on something that is as accurate as possible. Yes, that is difficult. There are a lot of uncertainties with the wastewater. So yes, we could use the old plan. We could bring them forward, and you could get a comparative answer. Do I think it will be accurate? No, I don't. So what I'm hoping to bring with you is something that I've reviewed as well as the Stand Tech team to really say this is a proper baseline cost for everything we know we have to do. Um, I feel confident with the water master plan that we can do that right away. So that's, that's, but that's the true question.
Will we have costs by the end of May? And I, I thought that sounded like you would get after the plan.
We will, but we, we need to review them and.
So on parks, uh, if part, the parks question, we can always revisit it later. I mean, sure, it will go up and you'll start charging for it, yes. But to Rich's point earlier, we can always revisit these decisions.
Right.
Yeah.
And yeah, we can change the rate with a public hearing and a, a fee schedule amendment once methodology is adopted.
No, no, I'm talking for parks.
No, I know, I'm saying, but in any scenario, as long as there's a methodology that supports a rate, we can modify the rate up or down to that maximum at any point in time.
The problem that we have with that is the conversation we had months ago was that you got one rate for one developer, another rate for another developer, and which, which is the fair thing? Really, you, you need to try to be relatively fair and even.
I thought we agreed to the ones that are in the tube are getting wherever the rate.
And, and then the eighty-nine hundred dollars.
I thought that's where we landed.
I'm changing, though, here in June, right?
July.
For the parks SDC, yes.
But they, they've known that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's been common knowledge for
So now we're talking about maybe changing it.
Since we adopted that.
There is going to be a third change in this. Maybe that's okay, but I just, I, I know that was part of the conversation we had, and we'll discuss again.
Yeah, anything submitted with a building permit prior to July first, we get the current rate. Anything that's submitted on July first thereafter will be charged. Our single family home will be charged twelve thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I'm going to just make a suggestion, trying to be cooperative here, that there was, the previous, uh, ramp up was eight eighty-nine to ten-five something. I have it on my computer. And, uh, and then the next year in twenty twenty-five was the, uh, twelve one or whatever it is. Yeah. So I'm going to suggest maybe everybody could agree that next, that if increasing it to ten, whatever it was, ten.
Counsel Walker, I don't think that that was the resolution that got adopted. So because we're not charging the ten, uh, ten thousand, whatever the number is that you're referring to, the charge that's currently intact is the eighty-eight ninety-seven oh nine.
Okay, but I thought we were talking about direction for where we want to go.
But I'm sure, okay, I just, the, the resolution that we have will automatically increase to the twelve. So if
Okay.
And if, if your, um, uh, discussion that you're having right now is related to amending the existing resolution to charge a different rate, we can absolutely have that conversation, bring that back to the council, but that's not how the existing resolution is structured.
Where are we? Can I relate?
And so I've heard a couple people say methodology discussion, bringing that back is fine for transportation.
I don't think there were any questions about the methodologies. There are no questions about the methodology.
All right, so FCS, you have heard that. We will bring back methodology.
Great. We'll be happy to be here.
I'm hearing, uh, no change to transportation SDC amount right now.
Right.
Great. And I'm hearing move forward with the parks SDC resolution as it is, and if we need to reduce it later, once we have a more holistic review, we can do that. But it will increase as scheduled in the resolution effective July first.
All right, with that, we'll, um, reset. Well, we're going to adjourn the work session. We'll come back at seven fifteen for the council meeting. Find me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag at the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everyone. Um, I always start our council meetings with a quick review of tonight's agenda. Um, I will, uh, call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then get into public comment. I see that I have three submitted here for this evening. Uh, was there any online submitted?
No, there are none.
All right, great. Um, after public comment, we will get to the consent agenda. Uh, this meeting's consent agenda is comprised of our city council meeting minutes from our April fifteenth meeting, uh, final amendment to a transit operations contract, an IGA intergovernmental agreement amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four for the Mount Hood Express, intergovernmental agreement renewal for. Intergovernmental agreement renewal for fiscal years twenty twenty five and twenty six for the Mount Hood Express. A scales avenue road closer for the Mount Hood Farmers Market. And a noise exception and road closure for a chainsaw car vending van. Under new business, we will have a discussion on the project update for the Sandy Operations Center expansion design. As well as the branding package approval for the new and exciting action sports components of Cedar Park. After that, we'll do a report from our city manager, committee council reports, and then a reminder to our councils that we have an executive session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counsel Mateen.
My president.
Counsel Smollett.
Here.
Counsel Sheldon.
Here.
Counsel Walker.
Here.
Counsel Exner.
Here.
Counsel Hupinson.
Here.
Mayor Puglia.
Here. Thank you for that, Jeff. With that, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Carrying that, we'll move ahead to public comment. Welcome, everybody. We have three cards of disreedom and order. A reminder when I state your name that you uh post the podium, you will have three minutes. Uh please uh state your name and address for the record. Uh first person on here is Jack Frick. Would you, yeah, you know, that's fine. Uh is there uh someone who would like to go first? Uh Heather, please.
Hello, my name is Heather Michet. My address is three nine three eight five Idelman Street here in Sandy. And I am the chair of the Sandy Hoodland Library Advisory Board. And recently, the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners has referred the question of whether the library district should be changed from a service district, which it currently is, to a capital district. And has referred that to all of the cities within the library district. As Board Member Drain will speak on while providing a chart to you that's in the packet you received. Forty-five percent of the county's revenue comes from the unincorporated population. And this population deserves a say and involvement in this huge decision of whether to change the district from a service district to a capital district. The Sandy Sandy Hoodland Library Board has unanimously approved a proposed letter. This was done in our February twenty twenty four meeting uh to the other library boards within the district about this issue of including the voice of the unincorporated population. And we, as the board, are here asking your direction and whether we may send this approved letter to the other library boards in the county district. We're also requesting a council workshop to delve into this issue, which is very complicated. Has a long history leading up to why this possible change is being proposed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Please. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Durey. I live outside of the city. I am the one of the unincorporated representatives at the Sandy Hoodland Library Advisory Board. I live on Coleman Road, four seven six nine eight. And the question that Heather presented to you constitutes a proposed letter, which we've uh submitted to you for your consideration. The issue is that not only do the unincorporates represent forty-four percent of the population of the library district. Forty-five percent of the total revenue to the library district. But if you exclude the three, what I'll call the West Side Libraries, which are primarily city libraries. The amount of benefit received by each of the city libraries from their unincorporated uh population is outsized. Even here in Sandy, where approximately fifty-four percent of the population in the service area is outside of city limits. That group provides the budget sixty-six percent of its money. The unincorporates in many of the libraries provide a much bigger per capita to each library than the city residents do. But the way the BCC has referred this question of reconsidering the framework of the library district from the service district as it was passed in two thousand eight to potentially transforming it into a capital district. All of the unincorporates have no voice in this. If it is only going to be heard by the cities in terms of what's good or bad. Any city would love to have additional funds for capital purposes. We know that. We understand that. But the tax rate that was set when the district was formed in two thousand eight was based on it being for services only. Because there couldn't be a capital district at the time. The purpose of our letter is to put to other library advisory boards, because that is the only way unincorporated residents have a voice in this library district, is to consider this issue. Many, I think, do not understand the technicalities. It, this is a very complex issue. It has a lot of layers to it. So our hope was to induce discussion at other library boards. And if it was their sense that the unincorporates, as well as frankly, all of the taxpayers who approved the two thousand eight measure. That there should be a voice for them in this process, that that could be sent to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. That's what we've put together for you, but we admit this is a very nuanced, difficult question. And we would like the opportunity to explore it with you further if you felt that was necessary. If not, we would like your permission to send the letter. Thank you.
And then um the third, um what I have is uh Mr. Frick.
Coach, right.
Well, I was gonna say, I was gonna start with you, Coach.
I was gonna say this group of old men that came in with me, we're all part of the men's reading group. And for the record, two live in the city in nine zones. So just for the record. Uh my name is Jack Frick. I'm the treasurer. I live at four one nine four six Southeast Coleman Road. I'm the treasurer of the Friends of Sandy Library and was the treasurer of the original pack that got to two thousand eight ballot major submitted and approved by the Library Service District. I am in favor of our library board's effort to communicate with other library boards after about the importance of including voter input. Particularly for unincorporated residents, of which I am one, on any proposed change from a service to a capital district. Supporters of the Sandy Library and the City of Sandy led the way in two thousand eight to the creation of a library district. The deal was quite simple. All county residents pay conservative millage. The county distributes dedicated funds by a formula. City supply building uses tax revenues solely for library services and only direct costs like general overhead. No funds would be used for capital purposes because the district was legally created as a service district. County Council stated that the only way that library district funds can be used for capital expenses is to change the master order. But instead of going back to the voters to ask whether to change the agreement as stated in the original ballot measure. The powers that be seem to want to unilaterally change the structure. Allowing diversion of library funds for capital purposes. Voters be damned. Now, it has been suggested to me that since Sandy is trying to function within the letter and spirit of the ballot major language. Why should Sandy get involved with some other library cities attempt to change the rules? My response is twofold. You are suggesting that if someone is robbing my neighbor's house, it is not my concern or worry until they rob mine. Secondly, it is affecting the patrons of the li- our library. All the libraries are linked and share material by either lending or borrowing material. The Sandy Library is a net lender, at least it was the last time I checked. If more and more money is siphoned off library budgets for capital expenditures, there will be less and less monies dedicated to the individual library's collections. Thus, adding more pressures on the lenders Sandy to support the other borrowers. This is a recipe for deterioration. At some point, it will be necessary to seek more money by increasing the district's tax rate. That will take a whole new ballot measure. You cannot change the rate. You have to have a whole new ballot measure and the trust of the voters. My sense is that voters will not be disposed to trust if after a unilaterally depriving monies from the existing collections to capital expenses without voter consent. The county then comes back and asks for my support for a higher taxation rate. Steal from me once, shame on you. Steal from me twice, shame on me. Voter consent matters. I'll share one more additional comment with you. It is better to walk for truth rather than falsehood. Though a time one seems to walk almost alone. I wanna offer you the opportunity to walk me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um that's all I have for submitted public comment tonight. Um I I did wanna, Mr. Ernesti, I know that you have, but we have an item here on our consent agenda later on. Were you wanting, were you planning on speaking to it or did you just, were you wanting to see how we?
Oh, uh Patrick invited me to be here, so I'm I'm here. I'm in love with it.
Well, I'm wonderful. It's wonderful that you're here. I just wanted to make sure that you weren't gonna miss an opportunity.
No, but I think you all know kind of what I'm about and what we wanna do, so. Let's uh, we've got like twenty chainsaw covers this time. So two didn't show up last time, so even if two don't show up this time, we'll do it pretty good.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I know that we uh talked a lot about um public comment in our council reports. We can do that. Or if anybody wanted to jump in right now, feel free as well, but you can do it later on in our council reports. All right, let's do that. All right, thank you so much for public testimony. So I really appreciate it. And we'll probably be kind of revising the issue as we talk during our council report this evening. Um with that, let's move ahead to our consent agenda. Um as our city council meeting minutes from our April fifteenth meeting. A final amendment for the transit operations contract. Intergovernmental agreement amendment for a fiscal year twenty twenty four Mount Hood Express. And the inter- intergovernmental agreement renewal fiscal years twenty twenty five to twenty six. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. Thank you for coming and all of your involvement in our library. Um scales avenue road closure uh for Mount Hood Farmers Market as well as a noise exception and road closure for the chainsaw car vending van. Um unless there's discussion, I'll I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Okay, motion to overturn the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna.
Motion and a second. Was there an item you had for?
I was just gonna say, I'm really uh thrilled with Andy's uh effort and uh Rochelle's effort to get those uh who's responsible between the parks and the transit folks, getting that more efficient and effective for everybody. And I also wanna shout out to uh Mr. N S D about your uh your festival. I'm looking forward to it. So those are both great, great efforts. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, then forget me doing that. We gotta shout out the Mount Hood Farmers Market.
Flying flowers are a great way.
Uh with that, we have a uh motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nays. Make sure everyone for that. Uh new business, let's move ahead to the project update on the Sandy Operations Center for the expansion design. Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Well, that was a lengthy consent agenda that went very, very quickly. Um I'll just provide a few words and I'll turn it over to you, Andy.
Take.
Um so Sandy Operations Center, obviously, houses all of our public works, parks, um and transit folks. And it's really the hub of all of the amazing work that our city does on a day-to-day basis. And it's relatively small for the number of staff that we have and the equipment that we have. And one of the longtime discussions that we've had internally is how do we get phase two of the operations center completed? And Andy really um has led the charge in getting us to the discussion around phase two of operations center construction. Um got a grant for some of this work that she's doing right now. And this is really a check-in um with the council to see what's been designed. Uh make sure that you're comfortable with the direction that we're going. Um so I'll let Andy, you know, dive into the details and specifics of the projects. We just wanted to give you a little bit of a background on how we got here tonight. And Andy and Ryan are here to answer questions and give you some more, some more information.
Thank you. Um, Council Mayor, good to see you. Uh Ryan Wood is with me, my building partner, so that um any questions that you may have about public works and their involvement in this project, Ryan um is here with me to help answer. We, from the beginning, had a very large kickoff in December. Jeff, would you mind pulling up, can I see the slides up here uh that start with the scope of work?
Sure.
While Jeff pulls that up, does everyone know Ryan Wood, Superintendent of Public Works? Trying to make sure that. There was no question.
Thank you. My building partner says it all, Tyler. So um as you know, uh I did receive a grant in twenty twenty-two for planning. Um I went for the grant for a couple of reasons. One, the city has talked about leveling up and finding room, um improving our infrastructure. Where do we put our employees? That conversation you've heard a lot. Um another reason, and this is, this is really guided by transit, is uh sustainability. In that we, at the same grant that I got, also has an electric vehicle um coming as well. And so um we already have um not very many vendors in our area for diesel mechanics. And um the thought of adding um electric mechanics to that list of needs for our capital is a little scary. Um and I don't wanna drive too far to get our vehicle serviced. So uh part of the reason that I jumped into this project, I actually started saving for the design in about twenty nineteen through the new STIF funds um was to help us bring mechanics to the city to take care of our own capital instead of relying on finding vendors. The idea um in the master plan, which is in front of you, was always to have a maintenance bay to um work on all of the city's vehicles. It's not to work on transit vehicles alone. Although after gathering data from all the departments about uh their maintenance needs compared to my maintenance needs, it's um pretty significant how how much I have in maintenance compared to other uh departments. And our team with MWA um put together a fleet analysis uh that did show that we are at twenty-eight percent capacity in this plan of serving the entire city's fleet. So um this is just a reminder that orange building, the small orange building at the bottom is the current administration building that we are um in which we're housed. Um another driver for um I, to be honest, I really wanted the maintenance bay. And then I was like, you know what? If we're gonna design a building, let's save money by getting a team to design two buildings. So um so the maintenance bay uh is the other larger orange building. It is, this is the original master plan. Um the, you can see the three bus bays. The clear building at the bottom is a planned public works uh maintenance or I'm sorry, a bay. And um I don't, and the other clear to the very far corner, not that one, but the very far corner is a public works bay as well.
Just general purpose, yeah.
General purpose. Um what is the plan for that other big area?
It was um similarly a large-scale storage and maintenance area, so.
Okay. Thank you. So um originally, the other clear square that's next to the orange administration building that um that we are housed in, it's behind it. Yeah, up a little. There you go. Thank you. So that is was the original plan. We're gonna plan this administration building, which is in the current master plan. And it's designed to look exactly like the building that we're in. Um and then the uh maintenance bay was designed to look pretty much like that um and go all the way over and touch what is currently our wash bay where we wash our vehicles. So uh very first thing in December, we had a large meeting. It's been a very eye-opening and interesting process for me. Um they come in and they really listen to the needs of the various departments. So transit was there, public works was there, parks and rec was there, Greg Brewster with IT was there. Um Sandy Net IT. So in listening to our needs, one of the things that they heard on repeat was this imminent need of administrative space and how to. Um, and how to find that space quickly and Carl, if you recall, you experienced it very well one evening when Carl popped into the Sandy Operations Building. Sorry, Counselor Exner, popped into the operations building and um, needed to go into a meeting. Um, and so I said Nancy's not here, she stepped out, just go to Nancy's office. He pulled up the meeting. And unfortunately, we've got dispatch radios going off behind him. Drivers come in and out of the back there, um, right by my office, actually. That has become the training room and we are almost always in training because we are almost always hiring new drivers. Um, it's the training room, it's the break room, it's the shift change room. Um, again, dispatch is there, so they're on their radios and, and I even heard Carl say, yeah, I'm, I'm in the operations building and I'm having a really hard time hearing you because the acoustics in the building aren't great either. Um, so we've kind of, we've run out of room and we have a lot going on in that building. So one of the things that they heard was let's find a way to make more room as quickly as possible. They also heard on repeat, we want to be very efficient. Um, and if you can find ways for us to save money and have more offices and get more space, then, you know, let us know those suggestions as well. So um, pretty early on, they gave us several options to choose from, and one of which on their suggestion was don't build this second clear building um, that's going to look exactly like your admin building. Remodel the building that you're in. Um, that will save you, there's, there are generators that are run by natural gas. Are behind the building. They were like, that is a, a very large cost to replace those. There's infrastructure under the grass that would also need to be moved. Sandy Net also has infrastructure underneath that would have to be moved. Um, it's gonna be very expensive if that is where you want to put your building. So um, you know, we had the discussions of, do you have a transit only building? And a public works only building. Um, and what we felt really made sense is more of a maintenance and operations building that can be a little bit louder. Have that training area, have the break space, have the mechanics on site. And then have your administrative staff such as myself, who looks at a computer most of the day. Um, and is in meetings most of the day, have some quiet space. So um, so that is the plan that you have in your pocket. Um, is more of a remodel of the existing admin building and then to build um, a larger maintenance bay than what was planned in the original master plan. And the reason for that is kind of twofold. One, when we looked at what was planned, it was fairly small and I felt like we were already out of space. Two, if we are gonna go for grants to cover the cost of this, let's see what we can get. And if we need to scale back, we scale back. But maybe we can get the money to cover a bigger building that helps us have the long term vision that the city needs right now. Um, so if you move on to the, and they're not really in the, the order that I would like them to be. So if you could move to um, the existing admin building.
Oh, you want to tell me?
I'm sorry, it's, it's down, yeah.
One.
One more.
There.
There you go. So this is the admin building as it exists. Sort of.
Somewhat.
Sort of. As it exists now, this is the layout. Um, so, and as you can see from these slides, we're in the design phase. Um, I'm coming to you tonight because I don't want to go further down this road and then find out that you have a different idea, have a different plan, have more questions. So this is um, currently what our offices look like. Um, I'm gonna start with the, the yellow corner. That's our lobby that you walk into. It's a fairly large lobby and post COVID, we do not have a lot of public that come into that building. We used to sort of have public come in that building. It's, it's not a lot at this point.
A few people in the morning, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and so uh, next to that is our copy and print room. We have a large storage room that at one point in time was an archive room for the city. That has been slowly being moved to other um, buildings because it's such a valuable space to use for archive that we're trying to re- reuse it. Um, my program administrator is actually in the green transit office there. That used to be our conference room that we also used for training. And so that is one of the reasons when that became an office. Um, all of the training then shifted over to the break area outside of my office. Um, that corner green office is where Ryan is located. Um, you got an electrical room, you got Parks and Rec's offices, so Tiana is in there. Um, and then you have the public works is the back rest of that green. And they've been doing a lot in there to already, it's, it's a mudroom. They've been changing things around a lot to try and make the space the way that they need it. Um, on the other side of the building is my office, the transit office. Um, my general manager and road supervisor is in the office next to me. And then you have uh, dispatch in the office with the double doors. That's a very loud area, um, not just because of the radios and the phone calls. People are almost always calling to schedule rides, et cetera. But that's where the drivers currently come in and get their manifest for the day, their keys, check in with dispatch, et cetera. Um, and then you have a reception area, which is um, where the transit assistant is and um, is our reception person as well. So that is kind of um, how it is right now. If you will go one more up, Jeff. One of the things um, that we have talked about with this team is um, to do this in phases. And one of the reasons we want to do it in phases is to get public works some office space that's so badly needed. I think Jenny's in a hallway right now when you're here.
Yeah, it's more than a hallway.
Okay, a nice hallway.
But we have four, um, essentially supervisors who are working in a lunchroom that run our water treatment system. They have to meet, they have, they have no space to do their work.
Yeah, so, and that's in the operations center. Um, so one of the thoughts of what we could do, if this is the plan that we move forward with um, is really take down, so in that orange box, we'd like to take down the reception area. Um, have one door instead of big double doors. Um, have an office where the copier used to be. It's a very large um, copy workspace area. Change the, what was the archive room into a conference room. Um, and I think that is all that we can do in stage one until, um, we build a building to get dispatch out of the building. So obviously then, when we build the maintenance bay, you have all of uh, dispatch drivers, G M's, road supervisors, maintenance coordinators, mechanics, move into the maintenance bay and make even more space. Transit comes back over to our side of the building. Um, and then, um,
So just to clarify that.
Yes.
Um, then the to the right of the orange uh, rectangle, the two off, uh, three off, uh, four offices, one with a table in it. Those are all transit?
Yep.
And then everything else is P W or somebody P.
There's, there's a, there's still the parks um, office. Yeah, Parks and Rec is still in there. Yeah.
Is that?
Mm-hmm.
Right, Jenny?
Yeah, Tiana has an office.
Okay, yeah. 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 So um, if you can take us to the, the maintenance bay.
Before you move on to that?
Yeah, uh-huh, sure.
Are we talking about a uh, two year fix, a five year fix? Probably not a ten year fix.
No.
You grow.
No, so um, the timeline that we are looking at, I, so public works is already um, trying to make some of these changes now. Um, we talked about one of the very first things, and Ryan, I can let you talk because you know I could talk forever. Um, is to put a door on what is currently the archive room that has a window in it so that it becomes usable office space and that can then be used now. I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, kind of in a transition period. We're gonna, we want to optimize what we have. Um, and that conference slash storage space is just way too prime to not being utilized for usable space. So um, by putting in a glazed door and a side light, it, it's a little more inviting. It's not gonna have a window. Um, but it can be used for much more general purpose than it is right now. Um, so under our, our preliminary phase that we would like to achieve would be to convert that door. Take that copy room that's not optimized right now. Shift things around, create another office there that's more usable space for either a floating office for um, one of our public work staff or create um, more space for my supervisors to have dedicated areas to work.
Is there any P W um, folks proposed to be in the other building?
So, yes.
That I'm sure I just.
Yeah, um, so there is what we considered shared space in the other building. So in the other building, we plan to make a very large, well equipped training room that they would also have access to. Um, and then there's also a conference room. And so we.
And potentially a second story.
If there's second story, that opens twelve office desks.
I mean, it's like now.
Yeah.
I think I totally added up, it's like forty office spaces. Which seems like a lot.
Are you counting the uh, next to the pink fuchsia, the, to the right of that? That's kind of misclassified on this. Uh, it says open space, but really that's our lunchroom.
I mean, in both buildings.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So if you have the second, if you do end up with the second floor, then there are, I believe, twelve workspaces in that building. And then, yes, if you look at um, especially if you look at the lunch area and count those as, as office spaces. Then that would probably put you somewhere around forty.
So to Carl's question, I'm not sure you answered it. Um, is this solve your problems?
Oh.
Not the implementation timing, but how far out is this looking?
Yeah, so according to the architectural and engineering team. They believe that if we continue to move on the path that we're currently on, we can have the maintenance bay. Um, the occupation date would be July one of twenty twenty.
So it's the other side of the quote, the question, right?
How long, this improvement, how long?
Oh, just this one?
No, no, no. Um, as in what, this build out, how, is that a twenty forty build out for projection as far as?
Yeah, what projection is that based on? That's, that's.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, because I was thinking, when could we do all of this? Yes, it's a twenty year lookout. Yes.
For this building?
For the occupation load of both buildings together.
The two buildings.
Well, we wouldn't see you doing something like this for twenty years.
No, so I thought that was what you were saying. We would like to get started with this building right away. Be able to move the dispatch um, and operators and mechanics into the maintenance bay in July one of twenty twenty six. And then there's a final phase of coming back into the admin building and uh, putting, you know, carpet. Uh, different faucets, changing the kitchen. I mean, basically, once you move people into, then coming back and finishing the, the admin. So um, hopefully we would be finished by twenty twenty eight is the, the absolute deadline. Or the, what we've seen so far for the entire project completion.
And you gotta have for another twenty years or?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so um, if you will go to.
This one or the other?
That one. Yes, that one. Okay. So, um, so this, by, by also asking for a second story. It allows them to get more usable space upstairs and to come out a little bit um, this way. So, and when I say this way, so the way the building is designed, um, if you see the stripe, the little stripes to the white is the, that would be the walkway to connect with the existing admin building. So you would walk out the back door of the building that we're in. Walk into this um, maintenance bay. And right there, the pink is then where the drivers would get all of their uh, things that they need. Check in with their road supervisor, have all of their, they have a clean, cleaning equipment, they take onto the vehicles, et cetera. Um, the layout of this uh, particular building allows where dispatch and the G M are, they're looking at the bus garages. So they can see the movement of vehicles. They can see which vehicles are in the yard, which vehicles aren't, et cetera. Um, you have mechanic rooms, electrical rooms. You also have a compressor that's kind of in its own concrete box up to the left because it's very, very loud. Um, but that compressor actually helps you um, with airing tires um, and putting oil into vehicles, et cetera. Um, both of these bays, it uh, are drive through bays. Uh, the fleet assessment basically said that if we did the entire uh, city's maintenance. We would be able to use one bay as the in and out bay. And then vehicles that were more of like a longer project could, you know, remain in the second bay. Um, with plenty of capacity to expand. Um, so if we had more fleet, we would still be okay. Uh, there are two restrooms in this building, one of which, and this was a, a great request that I like a lot. Is a restroom that you can enter from the outside, so you don't need to, if you're a bus driver and you're coming in, you don't have to come into where the offices are, et cetera. You can use the restroom and get back out on the road. Um, the training room is also in that building and then they have their own uh, break space kitchen. Um, et cetera. Then you would go upstairs. Thank you, Jeff. Um, the upstairs, the, the gray area to the right um, was planned, even if there is not an upstairs. It was planned as a mezzanine and it's for storage of parts. Uh, so it's a small storage parts area. And then if we were able um, to procure the funding to have a second story and we do build a second story. Then obviously that does give us the ability to have a lot more desk and another conference room. Um, this second story idea came out of several meetings that we had and is fairly recent um, to the plans. So that's, it's not really programmed. Like you said, like, you know, this is a lot of office space. It's not really programmed. I mean, just last week, Tyler was like, hey, we, we need to get a, a private room for some personnel. Can they get a lube oil and filter and go into the private rest area? And I'm like, absolutely, I'm sure that we could check out the training room if it's not or, you know, find something. This is not programmed yet. Um, so, I'm.
I'm assuming not so much extra cost for the second level since you've got a really tall bus bay, uh, the maintenance face tall anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
I assume it'd be more cost actually to do weird roofline adjustments to not account for this. So.
Yeah, the, the architectural team was act, they were pretty excited when, when the aha moment of, you know, I said, but can we do a second story? Because when we had the first story, um, you know, I have two road supervisors. We're gonna need at least two mechanics, probably three. Um, and, and nowadays, mechanics do a lot of their work at computers. It's not, you know, necessarily always on a vehicle. They, they need their office space as well. Um, and so I felt like we were going to have this project and then already be full. Um, so this actually helps me feel a little better about, like I said, the long term goal of what the city needs. And this hasn't include Sandy Net at all. Um, if they were to come down there, this gives them room. Um, I know that, you know, that's kind of up in the air and, and where, you know, where that lands, I don't know. But we have the ability to program them in if that's a conversation that, that needs to be had. Um, so I'm, I'm here to get your guidance, your feedback. If you think this is headed in the right direction, are we?
Will Kelly make you put a lift in?
But.
Probably for eighty, eighty eight.
Oh, so we don't need an elevator because of the square footage. They actually, the, um, I thought you meant for vehicles and I'm like, yeah. Um, but that, because of the square footage and as long as you have, um,
Alternate.
The, and, yeah, then you're okay.
Yeah, comparable services on both levels. You can, you do not have to.
Okay, you won't have small parts down there.
No, probably not. I do still have another bay, so we are talking about, um,
Storage racks.
Storage racks in. Storage racks in the bay that we currently do light maintenance in. Um, and doing smaller vehicles in that bay to make these two bays just big, bigger vehicle bays. Um, so you could, if you wanted to, also make that for, you know, ground level storage parts.
I. It's easier to factor something in than.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out how to put one in after the fact for flexibility down, down the road. I'm like, I might, that might be my feedback is to build that out ADA so that you have flexibility down the road if it gets repurposed to something else.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add that when I saw this design. I put a smile on my face that there wasn't programs identified in every office. Because we've, we have a past practice of programming everything we build for our current needs and not the twenty-year horizon. Uh, the library is a good example of that. The police department's a good example of that. And so looking at twelve chairs or three offices or racks of storage, whatever it turns into, their their space. And we will no doubt probably fill it with something. Um, so it was, from my perspective, nice to really be looking at the long term, looking at council goal. I don't know what number it is, but you know, future current and future space needs for city staff and operations and and making sure we have that a long-term approach to this. Instead of just what does Sandy uh Sam and Public Works need right now.
Um, can you kind of speak to how to pay for all this and?
I can try. Um, so. Like I said, so the architectural team that we hired, they they do have grants that they already know about. And will help you apply for. I already have buckets that I will try to apply for. Um, honestly, the money that I have been setting aside for this project has pretty, will be pretty much wiped out by this planning. Project, um, which is why you see on here that currently this is not a budget impact at all because it's, it's covered and paid for. But um, we will be trying to go for grants and like I said. The second level of the maintenance bay will probably be determined by how much money we can try to find.
So city money is zero, right?
Well, it will be anywhere from ten point two seven percent for transit. Typically is a ca, is my capital match.
And then your thoughts Tyler on uh Sandy Net?
Thoughts, not not uh decisions, let's, so let's preface with that. Um, obviously Sandy Net is in a building right now that we don't have a long-term plan for and need significant rehab. Um, long-term, I would love to have Sandy Net in a permanent home and a space that meets their needs. We've had a couple of conversations, Andy just mentioned one where if there was a second floor, about the slide was still up and stuck. Um, if there was a second floor, could that be a temporary workspace to get Sandy Net out of um? Uh, the bunker building um and into a, at least down at the operations center, that's one solution. Um, I think the other nice thing about this plan is that you could replicate this exact building and build two of them if Sandy Net had the funds. And use the existing operations center of site to build a dedicated building for Sandy Net long-term. Um, utilizing the same floor plan and the same, you know, drawing sets and save a huge amount. What's that?
For the Sandy Net bus?
Not for the Sandy Net bus, but they do need um drive-through bays for all of their deliveries. So it probably doesn't need to be the same height, uh but they need somewhere for large vehicles to drive through, drop off fiber. Um. So, you know, there's, there's some opportunities to get Sandy Nets and have some uh cost efficiencies with a plan set that's already designed. And maybe just making mo, minor modifications when we do get to a construction conversation with them.
Maybe you said, but did you have a budget number?
I don't. So part of the reason I am here is because uh for me to move forward and for them to take it to consultants. To help get me cost estimates. Um, I wanted to make sure I'm in, I'm in the right zone for you. Um, again, I don't want to get too far down the road and then have them give it to their consultants, give me all kinds of cost estimates based on this plan. And then go back to the, the board and say, no, this isn't really what we wanted to do. We do want two separate buildings. Go back and get me more cost, you know, and so um. Originally, when we had this discussion, it was, you know, they were throwing out numbers like two million and two million. That was pre-second story conversation. I would think that the maintenance bay is probably going to have a pretty hefty price tag. Um, not just because of the construction, but there's a lot of equipment that, like lips, that um will need to go in there as well.
What's the number you threw out?
Two and two was originally thrown out by the architect, uh but I expect the maintenance bay will be higher than that.
I'm assuming you have uh parking figured out, additional people and other associated the costs that come with putting more people into.
It will have to be figured out by the team. Yeah.
So you're probably, okay.
Yes, we'll make a policy that you have to take the bus to work. Um, so that you don't have to park. Um, no, we will have to look at parking, so we're not necessarily taking away parking spaces. But we do need to make sure that the future workforce has somewhere to park. It is planned in the buildings, there, there is um, you know, some, some spaces to expand. They have a little bit kind of planned out in, in one of these, but um we'll have to make sure that that is looked at. That is part of their planning assessment.
And Councilor Exner just made a good point. There is additional acreage outside of the existing operations center that the city owns. So there's room to expand further down at that site. Uh, the parking lot at the existing operations center gets used a lot for parking ride purposes. We have other parking facilities, so we've got some other opportunities to modify where um. Uh, patrons park in lieu of at your site. So there.
Yeah.
We don't have an answer yet, but there are other opportunities for us to make sure we have adequate parking for staff.
En- enough to not make it a problem.
Right.
You have solutions.
Yep.
All right, that's it for me.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excited to see it.
Right path.
Yeah.
Great.
Try and see over in Monter.
This is a rogue council corner.
We'll program that in.
We got that.
You, you know, that's true, uh, now I'm reminded, but you do have some art there in the front of. You're gonna have to, well, they have them existing, right? Need to find a spot for that and.
I'll take it.
We're excited to see it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, welcome Rochelle. Signing staff.
Evening, everyone. Okay, all right, I'll kick it off if that's okay.
If you want to go ahead.
Yeah, perfect. Um, well, good evening. Um, tonight, John's going to be presenting two branding options. For the action sports element portion at Cedar Park. And our objective was to create a catchy title that would captivate the interest of its users and to highlight this incredibly important economic driver. And community asset and actually try to find everybody. It's the first one in the Pacific Northwest that has a combined skate park, pump track and jump line. So um, this is a pretty big deal that we can, um, as the city of Sandy. Break about that. So over the last five months, we did just that. And tonight, we're excited to share the two options with you for review to help us decide which option is the future brand for the action sport portion of Cedar Park. So as I mentioned, I'll pass over to John who has been leading us in accomplishing this task. And he'll provide a presentation and further explain the process of how we got here and go for it, John.
Thanks Rochelle.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor Polium. Um, can I get the ability to share?
Right, so our, John, what's, what name are you logged in under?
It's probably under Rochelle.
Is it Rochelle? You should have a button there.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. All right, give me one second, everyone. And right here, how's that working? Did we do it? We did it. All right, so the uh, the agenda tonight is to talk about our purpose and do some introductions. We're also going to um review the process of this whole entire thing. How did uh, how did we get here where we are and then talk about next steps and answer any questions that you might have? Um, we did have the opportunity to have Jason Williams and Brock Wagner, who work for Spoken Wheel. Um, they are the designers and branding experts um that helped us through this process, but unfortunately, they couldn't make tonight's meeting. So um, I feel confident that Rochelle and I can speak on their behalf and answer any questions that you had. Um, and afterwards, we're gonna review the proposed branding packages um that the Parks and Trails and Advisory Board approved. And then hopefully choose your preferred package. And then really, from there, I'm just gonna provide kind of some. Like big picture background knowledge. So um, one of the goals of Cedar Park was to create a skate park, pump track, jump line that acted as a uh economic driver. And a, a destination really for tourism, right? We wanted to have this regional, possibly national, maybe even global draw. And that was really one of the reasons we, we liked American Ramp Company. They build their skate parks and pump tracks to the spec, specifications that allow them to host these globally national events that are recognized. Um, sponsored by big time companies like Red Bull. And because we went with them, we have the ability to do that in the future. And knowing that we're gonna have this national, global, regional draw, we really wanted to make sure that that aspect of Cedar Park. Was branded in a way that was professionally done, organized, done by um people in the business of skating and pump tracks. To uh kind of reach to that demographic and put it on the map. The other, the reason why we went with Spoken Wheel is because they are an offshoot of American Rent Company. American Rent Company's been in this process. They know our town, they know that park, they know our community, the skaters, the Sandy and the bike company. So for us, it seemed like a pretty seamless fit to work with them to kind of uh. Brand this section of the park and then that got us into.
Are they from, they're from Joplin?
Yeah, Missouri, right? Yeah. And so really, we met with them in February and they're a couple of cool dudes who are super into skating that got into graphic design and marketing and so.
I was gonna say at the end of the day when you're. Guys know what's cool and we know.
Exactly, yeah. A hundred, a hundred percent.
We resemble that. They don't know everything.
Yeah, fair enough. And so the process was, they sat down with us, what do you, what, what do you want? What are you looking at for this branding? Do you want to be safe? Do you want to stick with just like, is this gonna be the Sandy Skate Park? Do you want to take some big swings? Where are you at? And we said, well, kind of all over the place, but uh probably somewhere in the middle as far as kind of names and logos are designed. And they're like, well, it's up to you, brainstorm, start, start compiling a list of names that speak to what you think this park could be called and could be branded at. And so that's just what we did. We put a giant post-it note on my door and we talked about it as a staff and people came in and we talked to families and.
What was involved in that? Can you kind of speak to that a little bit more?
That was internally just our staff at Parks and Rec and then people who we would talk to. People came in and saw the post-it note, they'd ask what was going on and we'd get information from them. And it was also um Jason and Brock and then even Maddie, who works for American Ramp Company to a certain extent. Kind of giving their expertise on whether or not they think that would work or not. So we compiled this giant list and they, they looked at it, kind of talked about um, just in a, in a meeting. Where, where do we go from here? How do we whittle that down? And it got kind of whittled down for our group to three options, the yard, uh base camp and steelhead. We thought they were all, they kind of had this like edgy punch to them. We could all picture ourselves being like, hey, on our way up to the mountain, we're gonna stop at base camp or the yard and do a session on the pump track. We're like, okay, that makes sense to us, but it wasn't, it wasn't outrageous to some of the other options we had originally thought of. And um, they came back to us with kind of three graphic design packages, not in full components for the yard, base camp and steelhead. And after reviewing those three packages, kind of unanimously internally and with them, base camp just stuck out to us. The graphics made the most sense, the name, I'm kind of correlated. We aren't a traditional base camp here, but we're on the way up your mountain. You're gonna be our, your first stop up and your last stop down to hit this park and check it out. And it made sense. Uh, we liked.
Way better than Gateway.
We uh, we liked the yard too, that was cool. It's like, we're gonna stop at the yard and hang out. And we got into what, what a logo could look for for that. And we uh did some research and found out that there is a, a dog that summited uh Mount Hood like five hundred times and his name was Ranger. And it's a super cool story that no one heard about. We're like, that'd be cool. And we started talking about that as a logo and that came back and now we have this, this park called the yard with a dog as our logo. And they're like, is this a dog park? We're like, no, it's not. So that got a little confusing. I was really, really pumped for Steelhead because, I mean, we have an access now down to Sandy River. Um, Steelhead flow through there and I was like, Steel, you have to have a steel head if you're gonna fall on the concrete of our skate park. And then they came back with those logos and it was just really hard to turn a steel head into a skateboarder. Or a, put a helmet on it or make it resemble anything like a, like a true skater. It came out looking like a bar and grill logo, if I'm being honest. It was like a fish and steelhead and it was nice and well-done. It looked like something you'd have on a polo shirt or it just, it didn't speak to the kind of like the grit and gnarliness that we wanted out of a, a pump track and skate park. So base camp is what we landed on. And then uh, from there, we presented uh three options to the Parks Trails Advisory Board. And they whittled those options down to kind of two that we're going to show you now. So this is option one and the most important part.
So John, one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just curious, um, when, if any, maybe you covered it, I missed it, sorry. Um, like when I look at the fonts and the colors and everything, like, were we looking at our overall like branding elements? In the city, like obviously it's the green and blue, right? But like, with the font, so that, uh, uh, and just what consideration did we give to our city branding?
Yeah, uh, um, a lot. So we started off with maybe not as much and then kind of realized, hey, we're jumping the gun here. We gotta keep it kind of the Sandy style intact. So we had some pretty wild colors at first that we, we tailored down. So these are both uh sandy colors in our um package. We just don't typically use this kind of um.
That's interesting.
This, yeah, this fall scheme. And so that's one of the things that the Parks Trails and Advisory Board brought up that I thought was really cool. Cuz we, they kind of had it at six options. They would take this side right here, we like, that was option one, this was option two. They're like, well, can we combine them together? And we'd have this whole option one is now kind of both packages. And they're like, you could have these fall competitions and you're kind of using more of your like. Earthy, earthy tones and you could have like your summer, your summer package or use them how you want to throughout. The other cool part of it is that all of these we have access to. So this could be a patch on a hat, this could be a sticker, this could be a poster. Like you can isolate those and use them how you want to. Um, so that was.
Yeah, for the council's reference, do, can I jump in and show them the color palette that we have in our.
Yes, yeah.
Do you want to stop sharing for a second?
I sure do.
We have a style guide, I love it.
Oh, yeah, that, well, that's been my thing.
We, we almost always use the green and the blue.
Yeah.
But we do have alternative colors. This is the color palette.
So you didn't talk about how you got fonts away from Sandy.
Take back over to him.
Perfect. And so um, we really, when we went with it, we really loved the font. Let me share my screen for you again. We, we really liked this font before we kind of got into the font of our style guide. Um, the curvature of the B and the C represent like the lip and the tail of a skateboard.
So the font doesn't match. It's fine if it doesn't.
This, this font does not.
But you're still in the circle, you've got our, our standard font in the sand, in the sandy.
Right, right here. And I believe the next option I'm about to show you is our font.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, one thing I was just gonna say, I think that's kind of, i- i- this could be a nice way to push out the other color palette. Yes, no, no, just because, you know, like, you know, we have two sandy styles too in our facade. But one hardly ever gets used. This is kind of similar to that, you know, uh where it might be nice to kind of introduce that there's this other. Oh, yeah.
I think for me, what um, you know, I do like the um bike chain and the sprocket thing. But I think what was missing for me is that I really want to see Sandy bigger. Because, you know, Sandy Base Camp, I really want it to be, you know, we, we, you know, just place name it.
Well, Sandy's in there. I just think the font could.
I didn't, you know what, I didn't notice it at all until I zoomed in and looked at it.
So, yeah, it's just something to think about, guys, just something to think about. Is remember like this stuff could go on T-shirts and different things. You're looking at it on a, on a two by three. It's not gonna be that small. It could be a lot bigger and so it'll be bigger. So just something to think about.
And I think, I think to Kathleen's point, depending on, you know, if you're doing the literature and paper, you can always bring in the other Sandy. In a, in a foot footer or a header.
Yeah, it does have to level up.
Have to be on the logo, so.
Well, yeah, but I guess I would like it, I would like to, you know, if base camp is what you're going for, you know, then I'd like, you know, more like Sandy Base Camp. Because where is base camp? You know, since a lot of B C stuff and I was like, British Columbia, that's, that's where I, you know, because that's the epicenter of. That, you know, mountain biking and all that. So those are the, and honestly, I didn't notice when I looked at all this, maybe I wasn't zoomed in enough. I didn't notice Sandy at all until just. When I zoomed in just now. So that's kind of where I just want to see Sandy a little bit more.
It's, it's the old account manager versus a creative director argument, you know, the manager wants Sandy bigger and I, I'm an account manager. Right, yeah. Creative director wants it to look prettier.
Yeah, and I guess my, my only thing would be, I mean, the, the Parks, the Parks Board spent a lot of time going through a lot of different fonts and different, a lot of different stuff and. And remember this is to appeal to kids and athletes and people who are going to be doing stuff. And so I, I think, I personally feel where these landed are, are hope really get options. Uh, that are presented in front of the council. So.
Perfect. Let's run through option two. You guys probably all saw it, but we can have a discussion about it too. So this is option two. So our fonts, same two color schemes. The thing that Parks Trails and Advisory Board brought up that we, that we loved. Was like, yeah, we love the topo, the topographical map inside your base camp on that top one. But let's, uh, let's get it to that park area. So we're able to reach out to our park, our park designers. And so. These topographical lines are actually of the area where base camp will be.
I can barely, I see it now, but I didn't even know it was out on the black.
There you go.
Oh yeah, I don't like that. Yeah, it's not going to show up on your small logo or on your shirt.
I get it.
Those B C.
If we get confused with Dory and B C, that would be the worst thing.
And then, I mean, everything else is about the same, right? These are our two color packages. We'd get all of these, we'd get these patches, we'd get these stickers. All of these options would come into our branding package. And just another thing to put out about, uh, working with, um. Spoken Wheel is that we're not just getting the name and the logos. We're also going to get a three to five minute video, a sixty second video, a thirty second video that's professionally filmed and edited. We're really able to interview, um, our CND community, our, our bikers, our skaters, our elected officials to be a part of this video to kind of put that on the map. So when we are creating these events, we have, we have this stuff to fall back on that's professionally done.
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Presenting two options here. What did the Parks Board? Or did they, and what did our consultants pick? And did they, and what are you asking from us?
Great, great question. So our Parks and Trails and Advisory Board narrowed it down to these two, hoping that you would go through your process.
Did they have a preference?
They actually did not. It was, it was half and half as far as, cause yep, yep, they're such different logos. So they wanted to, um.
So Chris just said something that scared me. So I'm going to tell you a quick story.
Okay.
Scares me. So the children's course, we just built this, out in Glass Town, we just built this beautiful new clubhouse. And it was called the Children's Course. One of them was like, oh, children's course, but adults can play here. We need to change the name. So then we went to the Campbell. Uh, Campbell Complex. So now it's First Tier Greater Portland's Children's Course at the Campbell Complex. You should hear us answer the phone. It's like horrible. Uh, Chris, I heard him kind of under his breath, talk about, you know, this is base camp at Cedar Park. Within the city of Sandy. So just like thoughtful, just how are we thinking through how we're going to like market it and how it's going to. Stand as its own outside of kind of these other brands that we're creating within the park.
Yeah.
Great question.
Yeah.
Been thought of, just for some context, we thought about it a lot. So I think informally, what we kicked around is like, people are going to call it base camp. Like if I'm heading up to the mountain and I want to stop and hit like a, a non-mountain bike line, I'm going to, me and my friends are going to stop at base camp.
Especially, you know, people who are. Put summiting peaks, everybody's familiar with it.
And so I think that answers one of them. The other thing is that, that actually happens all of the time. We'd have it in our own systems already. We've got Fantasy Forest that's in Minig Park.
Yeah, sure.
Right. We, I mean, we've got Sandy Bluff Dog Park at Bluff Park. They're kind of two things. Um, Ron Tonkin Field where the hops play is at the Gordon Faber Recreation Complex. So yeah, I mean, and I don't think luckily for this, we don't have to answer phone calls and be like, hello, this is the city of Sandy. I'm the Parks and Recreation Department. You've called base camp, which is part of Cedar.
Rich asked your question. He was prepared for mine.
No, I, I mean, that's exactly what, I mean, that's exactly what I was going to essentially ask was. Or, or was, I guess my question is, but I think you outlined it. Are we looking at changing the name of the park? But I guess what you said is reasonable.
The other thing we did too is, um, we did a search to see if base camp was a prevalent name that, you know, is there other action sport elements named that or? There was a brewery.
I was going to say, are we going to go recruit it or is it closed down?
No, it's closed down.
It closed like a year ago.
Yeah, because we're immediately, we're like, oh, we could partner with them on a, you know, annual beer, but they're closed. So.
But I guess.
Where you buy the trademark or something like that before we get too far into it. So you don't lose it if somebody steals it from us.
You couldn't have a registered trademark on it.
Yep, we did, the company Spoken Wheel did address that with us. Yeah, so we could.
The other thing is just for a thought, we are now the, we're from innovation meets elevation.
My mind was already there.
We used to be, they, uh, the entranceway to the mountain. This really connects me to that.
I'm moved that we adopt option one as the official name and branding package for the action sports component of Cedar Park.
I enthusiastically seconded it. Discussion just a little bit.
There's a discussion after a personal second.
We talked about Sandy being a little bit more prominent.
I think it'll be prominent when you blow it up.
Can I just add to that? Cause we, of course, were daydreaming. So we thought like Dawn, it's the counselor hook and send, you know, it's prominent on the back of the sweatshirt. And then down the sleeve, you can have Sandy Oregon. And so there's a lot of things we can do to really call that out on that.
And I guess, you know, I mean, I feel like Sandy Base Camp, because that just, you know, really labels up Sandy, our town. Whereas base camp, I do like option one better because it's got the, you know, the, the bike stuff. Whereas I don't know what the other thing is. Maybe that's a skate park thing.
I agree.
Sandy Base Camp will not fit and look right. Having done a lot of these logo.
No, but if you increase the size of Sandy a little bit, you can at least.
It will change a lot.
We have a.
Motion.
Motion in a second.
Um, and then the last, but not getting interrupted.
There's, there's things in Robert Phil's order to get to it.
Okay, so I'm just saying that what I was trying to say was that I would like to see Sandy more, um, you know, larger letters and I would like to see the, um. Uh, background. I like the topo thing because that is kind of a more base campy thing than these, these looks like. What is, what is that? The designer guy, the coach bags or the, you know, gee, I don't know, whatever the designer is that has those locking letters or. I'm not a, I'm not a fashion, uh, snob. So I would like to see topo lines as the background rather than that. C's, B C.
Unless the motion.
Are you, is anybody willing to alter it to?
I'm not.
No, no. All right, seeing that we're not, and that there's no further discussion, there's a, a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by standing high.
Alright.
Opposed, nays?
Nay.
Motion carries. Alright, thank you. Moving on, on the agenda, T-shirts.
It would have been help, like it would have been helpful to just have this at the economic development meeting. Cause this, in this branding stuff is, you know, I just feel like there was, you know, I feel like. Everybody had their say and then, and then it gets to us and being either less it as it is, rather than having any kind of impulse. And that doesn't feel good to me. And I think the economic developer or, or, you know, who has a big, huge. In, input into the branding of Sandy and marketing this thing, I hope, is, um. I, it would be nice to have them.
And I, I do, I do think, I, I, I do think there's a strong point there that is we went through the process, you know, there wasn't a lot of. Like a community engagement type portion to this. Um, and where if we could have, whether, you know, economic development was suggested, it could have lived in parks. It did do a little bit. My entertainment parks was involved in that. So there was that portion of community involvement. Um, but, alright. Well, let's, thank you so much. I'm really excited about the logo. I think it's going to be cool. Um, less excited that the brewery is no longer. Hit my mind, but I feel like I saw a morning news segment about it gone away, but. Cool. Thank you.
No, I mean, this would look grand. Option A.
Which we could list the campaign's suggestions in a second. Alright, moving ahead, report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Well, first you all have a new laptop in front of you this evening. Hopefully everyone was able to successfully log in. Looks like they're all open and functioning and. Up to date and secure. So that's, uh, happy to have those old ones out of here and the new ones in front of you. Um, happy to report that just today, Tiana and I, uh, well, I was able to sign a contract that Tiana negotiated. For, um, adding the medians and some of those other. Uh, eyesore areas that we haven't been able to maintain. Councilor X, we've talked about these a lot in the past. So we have those on a routine schedule now. Admiral Parkway, the median at Bluff, um, a couple of other ones throughout town. So we're going to be able to keep a, a better handle on those ones and make sure they're staying. Um, in good viewing order for the public.
Groomed.
What's that?
Groomed.
Groomed, yes, exactly. Regularly groomed and making sure that we, uh, leading by example with the, those, um, items in our public spaces. We have a meeting later this week with, um, uh, Regional Solutions to talk about water, wastewater. All of our infrastructure asks, um, there's a new. Director in place now, um, and so we'll be meeting with her for the first time. So. Report more in my city, uh, or we can update report later this week. I just wanted to give you a heads up that we'll be having that conversation. Um. Also got a couple of questions about some of this timing of traffic signals along the highway with respect to how quickly they go from red. One direction, green and the other, and recognizing that we have large vehicles that are sometimes traveling at a speed that is higher. Than the posted speed and the potential collision. So we reached out to ODOT. They're looking into what modifications can be made to those. Uh, those red lights, you know, we're not looking at anything like an excessively long pause, but even just a second or two longer between when something turns red and when the.
Thank you for that. So that was a phone call with me is, I, I sit there on Minig and, uh, twenty six. Drop the kit, take kids, pick them up, all that. And it's amazing how much that light turns and you see a big semi truck just. And it's just going to take one person, one time, just turns green. They go, they're not paying attention and we're going to lose somebody. So. It's so, yeah. Hold it a second. It's a second longer. Yeah. I mean. Yeah.
So ODOT's looking into that for us and don't have a, a formal fix yet, but it was nice to see them being receptive of a, of a potential fix or improvement there that can be made. Um, and then just a couple of reminders for some upcoming events. We have the Senior Resource Fair, May fourteenth, Yappy Hour, May sixteenth.
Alright.
The library is having their spring celebration, May eighteenth. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Alright, thank you for that. I'm done.
Thank you for the new computers. They are horribly out of date.
I think maybe they were, yes.
Yes.
Oh, they were.
Computers are, no, these computers are horribly out.
Yeah, they are.
With the operating system, they need to be updated.
Okay.
They're about a year behind right now. So make sure somebody comes through and actually applies all the updates. Otherwise.
Oh, you're.
Probably halfway there. So it's a version one five. I don't want fourteen year old. Anyway. The logo, I, I do like the logo. I think it's great. I think if we'd have designed it by committee or community or anybody else, it would, we would have had a nice grown up. Looking logo that I. I appreciate the fact that they left us out. I guess. So because they, it's a much more youthful logo. And I look forward to having it on a shirt or a hat or something or like mug or whatever.
Oh yeah, I don't want council doing logos.
Right, right.
Feedback.
Yeah, limited.
Yeah, we do have opinions.
There, there's, it was probably wisdom and only bringing us two options. The, we had that on, uh, uh, mining or Proctor, I don't know which side, but we had the little speed limit machine up. And appreciate that. Thank you. I'm very curious about whether, what the compliance data shows, especially for. That, those roads, those one ways, because we do see people anecdotally related to the running the red lights, but just cruising pretty darn fast.
Yeah, as soon as he pulls that out, stops it, so pull this out, out, I mean, so that team.
That'd be great. And then the, the second part that related to that is I've been advocating since the last budget cycle for, um, permanent. Installed lights for both coming into the, going up, coming into the, the five mile hour zones on both sides. I believe there was budget for that.
Yeah, we're looking back. I don't recall.
Wasn't much money. It was like. Eight thousand, nine thousand each, you know, but yeah. If we're seeing people slow down because of those signs, it, it might save a life by putting up some relatively cheap signs. So, so.
I can report back in the weekend update with.
Appreciate.
Question numbers.
Thanks. And I don't know, maybe I'm just stupid, but as you're driving up from Fred Meyer and you hit twenty six on three sixty second, my dad asked me this and I had no answer for him. There's four lights in three lanes. What, what, what is the, which one's the fourth light?
Our dreams.
Our dreams? I mean, does anyone know? Am I just being dumb?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not the only intersection that I've seen recently. In Sandy, it's the only intersection, but I. Frequently I'm in Portland and there's lights with one lane.
All the important things we're dealing with. I know it's way down on the list, but my dad asked me and, and I just felt kind of lame that I. Had to go drive it to see. And sure enough. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Carl.
Just to carry off on that is, is I noticed that the, the right hand turn on coming up out of three sixty second to turn on twenty six. Doesn't turn green when the other turn is coming from twenty six into three sixty second. Probably ought to be able to turn that on to green in some cases.
Yeah, maybe it's supposed to be a right turn arrow.
I don't, I think that's not quite right. So.
Yeah.
Also to jump off on Don's comments, this, the, um, speed trailer was really unique. I didn't realize it had the blue blink flasher lights on it when you're traveling twenty five. That was not me traveling twenty five miles an hour over. But I noticed I was sitting there far, somebody rushed by and a flashing blue lights came on. Pretty good deal. I like that. It sort of got my interest. I don't know how you want to bring this up. Do you want to discuss the library direction?
However, we can do it whenever. I just don't care if I'm in that.
It just seemed like there was a lot of interest in. Trying to get the council involved in that with a, some sort of discussion item and I. How do you want to work that? It seemed to me that with enough interest like that for the library, there must, must be some way we can respond to that. And I'm sure supportive of trying to make sure that we don't put our budget for the library into risk. By changing something without at least looking at it closely. So. I guess I would suggest we try to do some sort of work session, right? But. I don't know what our schedule is, how busy it is, what it looks like in the future.
Well, we're exactly where we work on, because I, I don't think that we have. Any decision making on this at all. It's whether we support their effort or not is what I thought they were asking. Right. And so I think what the essential question comes, well, there's a couple, right? There's one is just where do we as a council body fall on this issue of. Capital expenditures and service expenditures. But beyond that, I think there's, there's a lot of other questions. Like one, do we even want to be weighing in on this? And, um, and the other is, is if the member, if we don't want to weigh in on it as a council body or as a city. What is the appropriate fashion, uh, for our library board numbers to be able to like advocate and, and engage on the issue? If, you know, so for example, they have a proposed letter in front of us to be sent from the Sandy Library Board, right? So if the sand, if that comes from the Sandy Library Board, in some ways, well, in many ways, it comes from the city of Sandy. And so that is something for all of us to really like consider is, you know, is this a political issue? Is this an issue that we want to use some of our political capital on with the county? And when you think about, maybe it is, I'm not arguing one way or the other, but when. Um, you know, you, I, I could argue, and I'll, I'll say this is when you look at like the recent funding request. Um, for the Hoodland Library, uh, the commissioners were really conflating that Hoodland Library. uh, the commissioners were really conflating that Hoodland Library funding request, which was really a completely separate issue from this, with this conversation. And so I could say by engaging the little bit that we already have on this issue, kind of already screwed up one of our funding requests with the county, right? Just in the miscommunication of that issue. Um, so, all that to say is perhaps we do need to have a work session or something with our library and kinda have a more in-depth conversation on this.
What's the timeframe on this? They're having an LDAC meeting on May twentieth, so.
It's coming right up.
Yeah, and so, and, and basically, you know, what I've heard is that all the cities have, have agreed to making the changes to the memorandum, the master order and the IGA. What they, what those changes are, that, you know, my, my position on this is this is really the responsibility of the LDAC, the Library District Advisory Board. And I guess I will disagree with the statements that the unincorporated people aren't represented, because four of the seven members of our advisory board are outside the city limits and unincorporated Sandy, so they have a majority vote on our advisory board. And the person, you know, Kathleen has done a wonderful job of advocating this position, but also just, you know, are just, you know, bringing it to their attention for almost, I think, five years that you've been working on it. And, you know, diligently working on it. Um, and she, you know, and so I feel like, you know, they have had a voice and, and so and because every one of the advisory boards has representation from the unincorporated areas. Um, so I feel like that is, they are represented, they have the ability to go to the Board of Commissioners. But I feel like for us that I would much rather spend our political capital on looking at, so, so, so I spent almost twelve hours looking at all the agreements and, and letters and notes, meet LDAC meeting notes and all that. Um, and, and I kinda put a lot of the stuff in there, but the cities, the whole purpose of having a district is spreading the costs to the whole district. And what's, what we have now is that the cities residents end up paying for the mortgage that we have on our library and, and, and other things. And I don't have a problem with that, but it is not even. And so, I don't have a problem with other cities wanting to have a change and, and and do what works best for them. I, I feel like if they need to build another wing, that wing will get filled up with books that will have more books for us to rent, rent out. I mean, you can kinda make the argument either way that, you know, them using it for capital would take money away from us, but on the other hand, another wing would be more books. So, I just feel like it's outside the scope of our advisory, Sandy Advisory Board. Cause their, their responsibilities are to advise the library director and advise the city council. And they have, but going around and lobbying for this, um, on a bigger, you know, that, that the role and responsibilities of the LDAC is to do exactly that. That's not the role of our advisory board. If they wanna go off on their own and do it, you know, as individuals, that's fine, but the city of Sandy already kinda has this, you know, because we have been so diligent and you know, there, I think there's, what, what I saw in the last meeting notes with LDAC is that Paul Savis said that, yes, that, you know, the cities all agree on making this change, so they're gonna do it or not. They only, they don't even need our signature on the agreement. It's, uh, I think two-thirds or something like that to get, to get the change, so it's already gonna probably happen. So I don't really wanna kinda waste more political capital. What I wanna focus on is like the tweaking the financial, uh, calculations of how they decide how much we get, because the cities, the way they, they, you know, the unincorporated people, uh, all kinda have the same formula. But for the cities, it's based on our, our, um, properties assessed valuation. And so, Lake Oswego, Happy Valley, all those, you know, Westland, they all get lots of money because they have much higher assessed valuation. I would make the point that I think people with less, with lower value property in their cities need libraries, need more money for libraries than Lake Oswego. And so I would rather kind of, you know, it, when, once this clears over, use our political capital to try to kind of tweak that, the, the formula of how that money gets divvied out so that we do get more money in our, in our city library. And so, so my point is that I think that it's outside the scope of what we're doing, it's a done deal, and I would feel like at this point, you know, I mean, there's several other, you know, this, the, in all the agreements, what they say is that the city, you know, they have given the cities both the responsibility and the authority to, to manage the libraries for both the unincorporated and the incorporated areas. So with that responsibility comes, comes the authority, so.
I can support that, Kathleen.
So, what, so what's your?
So, they just, they just wanna send this, right?
Right.
That's what you guys.
They're, they're doing a petition.
Right, but if they send that letter, that's a letter coming from Sandy, the Sandy's Library Board. From the city of Sandy's Library Board to the other counties. Basically taking out that stake, you know, taking out a position.
That's not our board responsibility.
No, and I get that, and I, and I hear you. However, I, I feel that, I feel that cities taking capital away from districts is just another grab at money so that cities can get more money for capital projects. Um, and, I mean, I think, I, if I look at, at this area, I think that Hoodland Library is invaluable to the people who live up there. It's absolutely invaluable. And we live in such a diverse district where you've got, you know, kids that go to school up there that, you know, how do they come down here and use the library in Sandy? Well, maybe they can't, and so I just I, I guess my, my pushback would be, I, I think, I personally support this. Um, I understand what you're saying, um, but I just, I think it's really important that, that cities not take district money away for capital projects. That's, again, it's just a money grab.
Well, it's gonna go towards library service.
I get that. I get that, but it's still, it's just another way for a city to make a money grab for a capital project they wanna do. And I think these small libraries are important.
Well, I think, I think we are in agreement that we need to do something more for Hoodland. And I would like to see us, you know, do, try to get Hoodland bigger library, rent paid and that kinda stuff. I'm totally, you know, we're supportive of that. What, but, but the other folks are gonna get their money regardless, and whether they, if they wanna, and the other thing that's, that, that solution is that's already a legal solution for them is to just, the cities can start charging the district rent, which comes under an operational expense, so there's not.
But we don't have to do that.
Nope, well, we don't have to, but the other cities, I mean, it, it gets them the same results. Without calling it out.
Yeah, this is very confusing to me. Finish.
Yeah.
Kathleen has gone through quite a bit of different issues and stuff, and some of them I keep up with her, and some of them, I don't know, didn't look like we're responsible for a lot of things there, but I do think we need to at least look into it, what we can do, what we can't do. I guess I'm supportive of having at least a portion of a work session coming up that says, there's a, let us at least understand what we can do, what we should do, whether we can get it in the timeline for this letter. Maybe that's not possible, but I don't think Sandy's needs to be supportive of Hoodland, especially our own, uh, libraries. So, I would be supportive of trying to figure it out, not tonight.
Right, and it's, so that's where I'm at, is I'm all for a joint meeting between our council and get them in, but, um, I, I feel like there's too many moving parts for us as a body to wanna weigh in on this right now and and to want our library board to weigh in on it. Okay, okay, alright, uh, we're in council reports. Was that it, Carl? Your report?
I wish. I did go to the fire board meeting last, uh, couple of weeks ago, um. They are doing their budget. I guess that's their biggest thing. Coming up on the fifteenth, they have a big budget meeting. They're gonna be working on, establish for the Sandy, uh, Fire Department, uh, part of the Clackamas, and I, um, uh, they, they did a pretty neat survival of, uh, rescue is the word, I guess, of, on the river here a couple of weeks ago, maybe almost a month ago now, and I was really impressed by the fact that they had all the equipment ready, they were in process of doing that work, and, and they got it done in a way that brought this guy out, and they had one almost the same time in a different location outside of Sandy. They didn't get him, so, um, I was pretty impressed that they have been able to do that. So, other than that, um, I'm done.
I'm not sure if I covered, but the, um, cause I, yeah, I don't, our last meeting was April fifteenth. Yeah, and so anyway, the, um, the, uh, pancake breakfast went really well, I think, for the Kiwanis and all those folks. Um, the solve cleanup was very well attended, um. I, I think that there's some, um, I guess some follow-up to be done with how, with maybe having the homeless task force meet again and talk about things. I think one of the things that is, would really be helpful is to understand, you know, to have like a little script of kind of who roles and responsibilities, because there was just a lot of, a little bit of confusion over homeless camps, and the camps that we were cleaning up had been there like at least six months. And so I'm confused about why we're cleaning up camps that have been there for six months, because it's a huge, you know, a huge effort, and I thought we had our ordinances in place this last six months that would have prevented that from happening. So, just to clarify roles and responsibilities. I know the ant farm is kind of a new thing that's come on, so maybe, maybe that was why, you know, six months went by, but I just wanna understand, you know, who's contacting the ant farm and who's, you know.
They're out of it.
And, and that's, she had mentioned that they were out of it, and I, you know, so, again, just kinda clarifying, or maybe re-meeting to just kinda clarify who's doing what when there's a report of a homeless camp. There is a bunch of stuff still on the sidewalk, or there was a few days ago, that we didn't pick up that, I guess, the homeless guy that had dragged all this stuff in behind tractor supply dragged it all out to the sidewalk, and we had already picked up, you know, more than we could even handle. And, um, that's still out there, um, on the sidewalk, I think, so. Anyways, just hoping that we can kind of bring that to a close. And then again, just wrapping up with library stuff, I'm really proud of all the, um, comments that were made tonight, and it's a wonderful group of folks that have very strong passions about library services. I'm really hopeful that we can make some progress with Hoodland and and both in the rent part of it, but also just in, you know, expanding their library opportunities and figuring out something to do with the, um, bookmobile also, to try to kinda support that, so, thanks.
Rich? Uh, thank you. Uh, so, guess I've been pretty busy and kinda missed it lately. As far as that, but I do second that, I think maybe we do need to set together a little homeless task force meeting. Um, so if you want me to do that, that would be super cool. And, uh, the next thing I wanna say is, uh, thanks for overbrought, it was you Stan that brought up, or whoever brought up the stoplights. I have found that the, are, are these, are those on like a, do they have the pressure plate under the concrete, or is it above? Uh, because I, I feel like especially the one at, at, by the post office there, it, it just doesn't seem to be working. And if it doesn't have that pressure plate, I'm just wondering if the cameras are, are aimed high and not picking up the movement of the vehicle or something. Um, but it's awful. Um, I, I find myself going down to two eleven just to, to leave some days because it's more efficient than going out that other way. Um, so anyways, I, I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, the driver feedbacks, I think I have to second what Don's saying there, uh, from my experience that those, and those being the, the flashy radar, like speed sign and stuff. Those, uh, uh, other life, uh, do show very positive impacts, but from a a speed adjustment purposes as well as community receiving. So, um, I would second any funding that we have to be used on those and um, they, some of them are movable so that we can even move them around in wrong areas. Yeah, I think I'll just stop there.
Great.
Yeah, so, uh, we had a economic development meeting this last week, and, uh, we're in the early stages, kinda got the first little piece of the retail study back. Uh, there'll be more to come on that. Um, uh, kinda the nuts and bolts of the, of the first half of the study that we received was just tracking people and where they shop. Um, and then where they come from, so, um, I believe that memory serves me right, like I would've thought a lot more people come from like Eagle Creek, Estacada, but they only make up about eleven percent of people who are shopping in town. Yeah, surprised me too. Um, and they had it down to like raw numbers, uh, based off of tracking your cell phones, so.
That's scary.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit, a little bit. So, and of course, you know, those numbers are skewed, cause like little kids don't have their cell phones and things like that, but it was really interesting to see the, just the raw data of the areas that they tracked and and whatnot, so.
Any more to come? Any surprises as far as where, is it all local, or is there a, up the mountain, or?
It's predominantly local, yeah, predominantly local, eighty-fourty-seven percent, yeah.
Some of it's, uh, existing employee, people that live outside of city but work in town.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and so, so, yeah, so i- interesting, and, and we'll see kinda like how, yeah, and Kathleen's right, yes. A lot of those numbers came out, so. Um, interesting to see how that comes back, and, uh, I felt like there was something else I was gonna say, I shouldn't mind. I forgot, so.
Will the, those numbers get forward to us eventually?
Yeah, that gave us just the first piece of the study, that was kind of like the introduction, here's what we tracked so far, so there'll be more to come on that for sure, yeah.
When there were some improvements to the Buy Mart Shopping Center, so I know you had asked about that. So that, remember the pictures?
The planners and stuff, yeah. So, uh, oh, that, that reminds me, thanks Kathleen, uh, our new code enforcement guys doing some great work with some of the dilapidated properties. Um, working with, uh, individuals and actually getting a a little bit of teeth maybe behind, behind some potential funds and whatnot to get some stuff cleaned up, so, um, so that's great, because that definitely helps with, uh, how things look, and then being able to rent those projects. That's it?
Thank you.
Chris? Uh, I don't, I don't have too much, plan commission was on four twenty-two, uh, they went over sign codes. Hasn't been done in a very long time, so that's, that's being revisited. Um, and then, they were talking about the land use approval, they extended it from one year to two years because of the moratorium. That come essentially through city council again, so they, but they were, they did that. Um, economic development, I was on vacation, so I didn't go to, so thank you, Lord, for giving that. I also attended the pancake breakfast at the firehouse, and there was a really good turnout there when I was there, saw Carol while I was there. Um, also attended the ant farm when Rep Drayson came to town, um. Decent turnout, I thought, from there, saw a lot of you there. And then my only other thing would, for you Tyler, would be, could we get Outlook installed on the computers? Because I need to access my email, and it'd be beneficial to do it here in the meeting. That's it?
Cool.
Uh, for me, there is, uh, homeless task force, we have the committee meeting, but we also are gonna invite the committee for a joint meeting with our council coming up, or we're gonna have Nick and Vahih Barham from Clackamas County. Uh, that's getting on the calendar, correct?
Yeah, we don't have it, um, unofficial date locked in, uh, shooting for the first meeting in June, but have not got confirmation that that will work with their schedule, but tries to find that date.
You're gonna coordinate and understand there's changes happening in the spring court.
We can.
Stop down in Bedford and all that.
A little bit of that, okay. Yeah, love for you guys to chat to first, but the real hope for me is, is they're coordinating a lot of the vouchers and all that, and it's like who's on first, who's on second, how does that all work?
And I did hear Ant Farm is no longer doing homeless services, so.
Yeah. Um, well, so it kinda, so I'll move ahead of the, so I, no, I, so I sat down, uh, at an opportunity, we've had people ask me, come in and meet with our council a couple of times and testify, he wanted to meet, you never know when Bill wants to meet, what we're gonna meet on. Uh, but we met on a couple of items. One of the things that I learned offhand was, is um, the group that's going out and doing a lot of these trails and stuff and work for Ant Farm, like they're like three to six months behind on projects, so I, I don't, I heard that we have like a, an item in our police budget or something for cleanups, they may not even Ant Farm may not even be available to go and do it. I, I don't, I don't know, so just something I picked up on that conversation. The other thing with Bill is, is, you know, he went through the letter, original letter back in ninety-nine that, um, Mayor Malone signed about our urban renewal agency with the fire district, and, uh, we're gonna have an upcoming meeting, I think, on our urban renewal, but there's, um, there's just a lot of interesting things in that agreement, I think, that we'll maybe wanna lean in on a little bit and explore a bit on kind of the original formation of that urban renewal district, and if we're doing everything correctly, so.
You're, you're talking about participation members and that kinda?
I'm talking everything from participation of members to, uh, the, to the agreement even with the fire district and where the funds can be spent. Uh, there was talk about it going towards, um, funds going towards equipment and, um, and, and items that urban renewal fund was supposed to be going towards, it's supposed to be capital, but those kinds of things. So you just need to really explore that agreement, make sure that it's in place. Um, emergence, oh, emergency vehicle, so I had a coffee meeting, uh, with somebody that had recently had their car break down on Bell Street, three sixty-second, and so they needed a tow truck to get there around them. That tow truck was able to get around that vehicle, um, on that road, but she, she had happened to be watching our last council meeting, goes, eh, I was sitting there and this emergency vehicle was able to get around me. So I brought it up to Tyler, and I'm not saying anyone here is right or wrong, I, I don't know about what's why it happens, what we can or can't do. But what I do know is in Sandy, we have ways of turning things into urban legends really fast, right? And so, I just, I think we need it, let's just, let's, I was talking to Tyler, let's just figure it out, let's test it out, we gotta get a drone above it, and whatever. But I wanna know, if a car can't move, can we get an emergency vehicle around? If we can, awesome, if we can't, right, let's address it.
Well, I'm not gonna tell you like what kind of car she had, and if she's pulled all the way up against the curb.
I took my tape measure out there because I asked somebody that I knew, how wide is the road? And he told me, and then I took my tape measure out. Those, both lanes are sixteen feet wide. And my car is six feet wide. My pickup is, you know, huge pickup is six and a half feet wide. So there's sixteen feet is plenty of room for um.
You know, the fire board is aware of that and I know the police has been.
Well, and then the whole backup of students and turning around, that's a whole nother thing. But I'm just talking as far as the emergency vehicle thing, right? Could, could be good.
Yeah.
Um, the uh, thank you to all the library board members, everybody. Thank you so much for the involvement, coming out and doing this. Really appreciate it. And then just the final thing, I know it's been a long meeting, is um, and you'll hear more from me out of, on this a little bit. So I just, I'd like just to lean in on biking a little bit more. Kathleen and I were talking about it not long ago. You think about this pump truck that's coming in, you think about Sandy um, Ridge that's already here. Uh, you think, uh, I was at the University of Oregon not long ago on campus where they have the bike share and the different stations. And we've got the transit stations already. Imagine having a row of bikes for bike share here locally. I just, I think biking, we got a highway down the middle. I'm not trying to view this guy that thinks people are gonna be biking from Sandy to Portland to their jobs, right? But I do think as we think about that shuttle, the business shuttle that goes around and how neat that is, like it'd be cool for someone to be able to get off the transit stop and get on a bike and ride around a little bit or whatever. So it'd be cool to be kind of a bike city and lean in on that as far as marketing and culture and all that.
I moved here twenty five years ago. I used to bike. I biked once. It was scary enough. I was, I was dumb. Cause we didn't have any bike trails. There was nothing twenty five years ago. It was just one lane roads with not even a sidewalk. So.
And a bike brewery would be great. Maybe we bring it back and call it Base Camp Biking Brewery or something. Who knows? With that, I'll go ahead and turn our meeting. Remember, we have the exact session afterwards. Thank you, everybody.